This is in the way.
Oh, we're good. We're waiting for some technology in the closet back there to work. Apparently it's working.
Pay no attention to the man behind it.
That's right. All right. With that, I am going to call this meeting to order and ask that the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Sander?
Here. Would you read the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, January 9th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, January 10th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Okay. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation. And I'm going to ask Shelley Blanchard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation, if you would remain standing, will then be led by Olga Herman of Oasis Christian Ministries.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we are so thankful, God, to you for all the things that you offer and all the things that you do and you keep each one of us, God. Lord, I'm so thankful for this council, Lord, in Rancho Cordova City. And Lord, we ask you today that you would lead and guide them, God, and lead and guide their families, keep them protected, Lord. But the city has got so many beautiful things going on and so, and other needs, Lord. Give them wisdom to go the right way and ideas to make it happen, God, and the resources that need to come forth. We thank you, Holy Spirit, that you promised to be our counselor and our guide. So we thank you, Father, that we have the Holy Spirit to just guide us in all things. Lord, bless them, bless their families, bless the mayor and the council members here and all those in administration, all those that serve in whatever capacity, the police and the first responders, God. We thank you for who you are. We thank you that when we turn to you, you are always there. You never leave or forsake us, God. We thank you, Lord, that even when we don't understand, you're still there and you have the right answers for us. Lord, when they're going, making difficult decisions for this county, God, and the city, Father, we just thank you, Lord, that you would just guide them in those decisions and come up with answers as they work in unity, Lord. If there's division and divisive things, God, bring them together as one, that they can come up with solutions, Lord, for some of the harder issues. We thank you for the peace that you put upon the city, that even other cities around would go, wow, Rancho Cordova is just a very peaceful place and so much community activity, Lord, that you bless the people here. We thank you, Father, for all these things and even more that you bestow upon us, God, in Jesus' mighty name, and then, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much for that lovely invocation. We are going to move on to presentations and Stacy Delaney, I think you are up first. Counsel, you may want to join us for photos down front.
Happy New Year and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. And as Mayor Sander mentioned, we are here tonight to present ceremonial checks to several of the organizations that receive grant funding from the city through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. And the first check tonight is for Elk Grove Unified School District for the reduction of social isolation at Robert J. McGarvey Elementary School. And studies have shown that using strategies like a buddy bench can encourage and increase peer inclusion on campus. And with the help of Measure H funding, Robert J. McGarvey Elementary School was able to purchase and install three buddy benches. The school was also able to add a new feature to their existing positive behavior intentions and supports program for all of their first through sixth grade students. Robert J. McGarvey Principal Michael Goulden is accepting the check for $2,380. The second check this evening is going to Folsom Cordova Unified School District for enhancements to Mitchell Middle School's Art Club. Mitchell Middle School's Art Club is undergoing a project to paint murals on buildings on their campus with themes that depict a growth mindset for their students. Students will also be going on a field trip to the Crocker Art Museum and a walking tour of local murals. Arts teacher and arts club advisor Natalie Eck is accepting the check for $9,000. The third check this evening is also for Folsom Cordova Unified School District, but this time for a musical production at Cordova High School. Music theater provides a safe after-school option that keeps students motivated and involved with their community. And high school musicals cost thousands of dollars to produce and involve students both on and off the stage. Thanks to Measure H, Cordova High School will begin the production of Matilda, the musical, this semester and is scheduled to showcase in the spring. Drama teacher and play director Mark Cornfield is here to accept the check for $9,500. The next check this evening is for Cordova Community Council Foundation for the continuation of the sports promotion campaign and the Positive Coaching Alliance Program. The Cordova Community Council has taken many steps to enhance the existing sports programs around Rancho Cordova, and it's also engaging with consultants to assist with digital and traditional outreach efforts to boost enrollment. The Cordova Community Council has also facilitated a training of all coaches in Rancho Cordova sports leagues in the cutting-edge techniques which adhere to the better athletes, better people philosophy, which is represented by the Positive Coaching Alliance. Rod Borba, president of Cordova Girls Softball and Rancho Cordova Athletic Association Board Member, is accepting the check for $49,850. And the last check this evening will be presented to Folsom Lake College Foundation for its continuation of the Rancho Cordova Promise Program. The Promise Program is a scholarship program to pay the fees for Rancho Cordova residents who graduate from high school during the 2019-20 school year and attend a Folsom Lake College campus as a full-time student during the academic year immediately after high school graduation. Additionally, students who receive financial aid are eligible to receive scholarship money towards the purchase of things such as textbooks, supplemental materials, school supplies, parking, gas cards, and more. Brian Robinson, the dean of the Rancho Cordova Center, is accepting the check for $150,540. And council has already committed funds to continue the promise, so that just represents funding for the one fiscal year. And this concludes tonight's check presentations.
Thank you, Stacy. We are moving on to item number 10, public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council on any matter or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by me at that point on the agenda when the item will be heard. See one turn in a card?
I have two cards at this time. First speaker is Russell Henley. Following Russell will be Dale Page. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you and good evening, members, Mayor Sander and council members. My name is Russell Henley, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the 180-member Sacramento Metro Advocates for Rail and Transit, or SMART. As you know, Sacramento Transportation Authority is considering placing a half-cent sales tax measure for transportation on the Fall 2020 ballot. Leaders from business, labor, and community organizations, plus public health and environmental advocates last year formed SMART and the SAC Moves Coalition. Together, we envision a new transportation measure that will lead to a future where most county residents can live and work within walking or biking distance or a transit stop for everything they need. We are urging the jurisdictions comprising the Sacramento Transportation Authority to meet our counties' transportation challenges with a spending plan that provides multiple benefits for fixing our current roads and from enhancing public transit, bike, and pedestrian infrastructure. We have developed a detailed proposal. I've provided copies of our two-page summary for you here tonight and a copy of our PDF of our 25-page detailed document to city staff for your information. Our plan shows how congestion and air quality can be tackled by investing first in fixing current roads and expanding public transit. Public transit, which is more cost-effective at relieving congestion than constructing new road capacity, should be the top priority for congestion relief. Transit also reduces emissions of air pollutants and greenhouse gases. Public transit is not just about getting to and from work or school. In the past six months or so, I have used light rail to make three shopping and entertainment trips to Rancho Cordova from Midtown Sacramento that I would not have made if I would have had to drive. In addition to fixing current streets and expanding public transit, our plan also emphasizes the dedicated funding for bike and pedestrian projects to make local streets safer. Our plan also includes policy elements for vehicle miles traveled, growth management, safety, and public accountability. The city of Sacramento last month approved a resolution on the transportation tax number that, while the specific is largely consistent with our proposal, and our proposal is also consistent with the recently approved Metropolitan Metropolitan Plan from SACOG. Counties, cities across the state are using the kinds of approaches and policies we have proposed to retool existing transportation systems to move more people more safely and affordably while decreasing dependency on single occupancy vehicle trips and improving air quality. We invite the city of Rancho Cordova to support the SMART SAC Moves Plan for a state-of-the-art transportation measure that will serve all of Sacramento County well into the future. Thank you, and our members would be happy to provide you with additional details on our proposal.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Second speaker is Dale Page. You'll also have three minutes.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak with you. I'm a member of the Citizens and Climate Lobby, and as you know, Citizens and Climate Lobby is concerned about greenhouse gas emissions. Basically, California gets reasonably high marks with respect to ameliorating greenhouse gas emissions. However, most of those gains have come in the context of the electricity generation. In the context of transportation, our greenhouse gas emissions are actually increasing. So it's important that we try to set a foundation which will allow us to provide a transport system which will support modes of transportation which give people options to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions if they wish to do that. And I'd like to voice the support for the SAC Moves SMART policy framework that Russell was just speaking about and indicate that it contains quite a few measures beyond that which the STA board staff recommendations have in order to ensure that greenhouse gas emission reductions are appropriately tracked and our transportation system is transformed, hopefully, in a way that will facilitate a reduction of our greenhouse gas footprint in the area collectively. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
No.
Seeing none, we are going to move on to item number 11, council reports. Mr. McGarvey?
Yes. Let this go in here.
Technology wins every time.
Well, I want to say happy holidays and happy new year to everybody here. We had a wonderful year, and I think this year is going to be even better still. We were very happy to see that ice rink that closed today, but it was something that was very enjoyable. My wife and I and our daughter and our son and his wife and their five kids went ice skating. The one son was the one that was sliding most of the time. Fortunately, I didn't. I'm very glad about that. But it was a lot of fun. I haven't been ice skating for a long time. It's been about eight years, I think, since we had an ice rink here in Rancho Cordova. But it was a wonderful thing, and we had a really a good time. The 19th of December, I was able to go to the Mayfair Veterans Village, and I was able to hand out eight more Vietnam War lapel pins to the veterans over there, eight of them are Vietnam War veterans. Most of the ones there are from the Gulf War and Iraq, Afghanistan, but those eight were from Vietnam. So there's, if you know of anyone who is a Vietnam War veteran, someone who, and that, by the way, is anyone who served active duty between November 1 of 1955 to May 15, 1975. That's the law that Congress passed, said that's how long the Vietnam War era was for the United States. So anyone who served during that time is a Vietnam War veteran. So you can give me the word on that, to anyone, I'd be more than happy to give them that lapel pin. They deserve it, and they are welcome, a welcome home. That's our main thing that we're doing on that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
I would also hope that everybody had a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. Just point out that, in keeping with the transportation that we've just heard about, we now have what regional transit is calling Smart Ride in Rancho Cordova. Tony Bijack in the Bee described it as an Uber-like shuttle bus, and that's actually a pretty good description. It serves the part of Rancho Cordova that is north of Highway 50. And there is a map of the service area on our city website. So you can, basically, it's my impression you just call them. There's an app, but if you don't have an app, there's a phone number, and you can just call them and they will come and get you. I think a lot of people have seen them parked up at Safeway, either while they're either waiting for people or have dropped people off. But there are two, and they're very accessible and very easy to use. And this first month affair, I shouldn't say that. I started to say this first month affair is free, but we're probably already past our first month, so I'm not sure. But it's only $2.50 to ride. It's very, very reasonably priced, way less than Uber or a taxi. And that's all really. I would ask that we adjourn tonight in memory of two people. One of them is Lynn Robey, a lady who served on the City of Sacramento City Council for years and was very committed to her neighborhood, very committed to the city of Sacramento. Her husband is a retired judge, and they were certainly one of the leading couples of Sacramento. And then also, our family lost a grandfather, a wonderful veteran named Greg Judd. Greg started his Air Force career as a crew chief flying in and out of Vietnam and did a variety of things during his, during his time in the Air Force, lived in Rancho Cordova part of the time, and was really my daughter-in-law's father, effective father, as she was growing up. So I would ask that we adjourn tonight in memory of Lynn Robey and Greg Judd. Thank you.
Mr. Terry?
So in reviewing my calendar, since we last met, I don't think I had really any city functions that I got to attend due to colds and other things like that. We didn't make it to ice skating. We didn't, again, because of colds and other health stuff, we didn't go to the tree lighting this year. So thanks to everyone that did all those great events that I didn't get to go to. But, you know, we had a nice, quiet holiday, and I do want to thank city staff for those of you that were still here and working this week and last week and everybody that, you know, helped finish out the year. It was a great year. There was a lot of great things to do. And yeah, spent a few weeks just resting with family more than anything. So Happy New Year.
Mr. Gatewood?
All right. So a couple of things. My favorite program that's happened, the Holiday Star Program. So that's where we get needy children that are in our schools, and we take them to Walmart, and we shoot a starter gun, and then they run in there with their parents, and they get gifts and presents and stuff for school, and they have backpacks. And it's one of those really good things that, you know, our city is known for. And then, you know, we got the, our, of course, our cops come out to help us, and Chris was there, and just, it's a great experience in this way. It's one of those special things that happens in only Rancho Cordova that I know of. Big news is, is probably no one else knows this, but one of the largest producers of power has now located their new hub in Rancho Cordova. They're called Ultech Power Industry. They're in, I think, I want to say 30 different states, and they're looking to put about 150 new jobs in Rancho Cordova. So good job, economic development. Great to have them now in our area. Met with them, the owners. They have the coolest technology I've ever seen in my life. I walked in, the guy tapped a board, 17 offices appeared, they all said hi to me. I was like, is, that's, that's awesome. And then he started swooshing, and he brought up on the iPad, and he's like, yeah, and then we're going to, like, and then you see the power grid here as we're trying to improve as we cut things. And I was like, that is great. Can I get some of that at council? So amazing. And then, of course, STA meeting, and then we got one of those good, hopefully, a very productive meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gatewood. I'm just going to pass on commenting things that people have already mentioned and sort of reflect on what a great holiday season, Christmas season, we had in Rancho Cordova, from Christmas in Cordova to the Holiday Star Program that Garrett mentioned, to the ice rink that's been mentioned, which was very cool. The ice rink was very cool.
We got that.
Okay. You got it? Man, I was working on that like 10 minutes up here.
I know. I looked at it three times.
Channeling Ken.
The tree lighting, right?
The holiday concerts that happened, the Breakfast with Santa, the Live Steamer Santa Train in Hagan Park, very special. And of course, the lights that illuminated so many of our neighborhoods. It was a wonderful holiday season. Very proud to be a Rancho Cordova. And I think that's my report. Mr. City Manager?
I could tell you that my grandkids, you know, there were new blowups on lawns this year. So I went around telling everybody how many Smurfs I'd seen, and my grandkids let me get away with it for three weeks without telling me. Those are minions. Those are not Smurfs.
Oh, dear.
There's a difference.
Cyrus, do you have a report?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind the council and the community that this coming Thursday, January 9th, is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So please be sure you take the time to thank our law enforcement and police officers for the amazing, great work they do in our communities to keep us safe. So just wanted to remind everybody of that.
Cyrus, do you want to tell people about the, their Five at Nine program RCPD has? Or do you want to get Chris to do that?
I think it would be best if the police chief can come up here and explain that.
Chief Pittman.
For his scheduled remarks.
That would be the latest. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. What Five at Nine is, it's a tip program, and they're going to be introducing to the community, I think we start this week, is that right? And so we're going to be giving certain tips that we do for crime prevention and constant reminders to the community of what we can do to keep our community safe. So it, I believe it starts this week, and I don't know all the tips we're doing. Do you know what they are right now?
So the, the main point of this campaign is to get people to check their home and make sure everything is locked up right and tight at 9:00 p.m. So to create a habit. So it's called the RCPD 9:00 p.m. routine, and that's the hashtag. So you'll be seeing more, as Chief said, about that on social media, and there's some, there'll be some special communications about that.
And it's basic things like lock your vehicle, close your garage door, turn on your outside lights, turn on your burglar alarm, and I forget what number five is.
Exactly. I don't remember what number five, but there's going to be some changing reminders on those. So we'll be sending a batch out that'll be a constant reminder on certain ones, and we'll be changing it up for other crime prevention tips that we'll have out there.
Could you two introduce yourselves just for all the viewers at home?
I'm sorry, I thought I did. Chief Chris Pittman.
And?
Maria Niestad with Communications for the City.
So I just heard, I think it was this morning, a story from Lincoln, had 30-some car window smashes in one neighborhood.
I believe that was Rockland.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry, it was Rockland.
Yeah, we had 75, actually.
Oh, my goodness.
So those, we did have a pretty good break in that case, though, and I believe we had those people in custody.
Right. And there were, how many do you, I'm hearing three. There were three people responsible for 75 windows.
In that particular one, it was three, and it was a joint effort. We believe that did affect our area as well.
That is amazing.
So, yeah.
It's amazing how, I'm always amazed at how, you know, one criminal or a small group can cause so much havoc.
Yes.
The impact is so disproportionate.
Yeah.
Number five was, don't leave anything visible in your car.
That's.
There you go. So they're just simple tips that people can do, and it's creating that routine at 9 o'clock every night. So our officers will be educating folks, and then there'll be communications going out via social media and other channels.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Cyrus?
That's it.
All right. We are going to move on with item number 13, consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to poll an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to poll?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of items 13.1, 13.2, and 13.3.
I'm happy to second. I do just want to make one request of staff for our next retreat. If we could have an agenda item on regional boards, commissions, and committees as a discussion item for this council?
I think we mentioned that at our last meeting.
Yeah. So I mean, that's one of the ones we're about to vote on.
Yes.
We don't even talk about it now, but we should at some point reflect on how and why we do these. So, but we can, I don't need to take away from that. So I'm happy to second the motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Yes.
Did we decide not to vote?
Be the voting? I don't get my thing.
It's not voting.
It's not coming up.
We are using a new system here tonight, so there may be a hiccup or two.
We're using a new electronic voting system.
So that our viewers at home can see exactly who voted and how they voted.
Yes.
I did.
Even on this vote, which will be, I predict, relatively boring.
Okay. I'm voting aye, by the way, since I was called.
Linda?
Oh, it just came, it almost there. Escape F5.
Okay. Our network is going a little slow. So Linda, the motion was from?
Correct.
Okay. The second was?
For me.
Donald.
It's cool. Hit it.
At least you remembered what we were supposed to do.
I was waiting. I figured it'd come up before she called. I figured it'd come up before she called me.
Our network is really slow at the moment. So I'm going to simply do a verbal roll call.
Okay.
And we will start from there. Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Hold on. Yes, and I'm saving.
There. I'll be the only vote up here, just so you know.
You got it?
I got it.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Hit the button. I want to be the one up top.
It's gonna be 100% by Gatewood.
Excellent.
Oh, it got us all miraculously. All right. We are going on with item number 14, Consent Public Hearing Items. Consent Public Hearing Items consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. I am going to open the public hearing. Are there any speaker cards for any of these items?
No.
I am going to also recuse myself on item number 14.2.
Well, why don't we vote on them independently so that?
So we will separate 14.1 and 14.2.
So I'll move 14.1.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded on 14.1. I will close the public hearing on 14.1. Roll call, please.
Can we do that again? The motion?
Yes.
I moved it.
Donald made the motion.
Seconded by Linda.
Thank you.
For just 14.1.
Okay.
Excuse me. Just 14.1.
Okay.
It's all right. We'll get faster. Okay. Don't need stress.
It's not Stacy's finger.
Maybe her mouse is backwards like mine is.
It's not.
A backwards mouse.
It goes the wrong way.
Would it be bad if I YouTube the Jeopardy theme song right now?
It's an east end that way.
Okay, now we're ready to do our roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Hold on. Yes.
Why is he getting?
Mayor Sander.
Aye. I am now gonna step away from the podium. Vice American, run item 14.2.
Okay.
Let him leave. Got it.
Yeah, you gotta reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
Open public, oh, sorry.
Excited.
Open public hearing on 14.2.
Move approval of item 14.2, the conditional use permit for 2440 East Tiffany Lane.
I'm happy to second that after you close the public.
Can I close public hearing? Roll call.
The second was Councilmember Terry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Save and yes?
Mayor Sander is absent for this vote.
So how come nobody but Garrett is getting this?
IT guy.
I'm still younger.
You can have your gavel back. I was killing it, though.
Nah, not enough time. You guys should have debated it.
Okay. And I recuse myself on 14.2 because that project is on my street. I think I'm outside of the legal radius, but nonetheless, recuse myself. We are now on to public hearing items, item number 15. Let's see if the city clerk could read that item.
Sunrise Palms Conditional Use Permit, Administrative Use Permit, Major Design Review and Request for a Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity, Project DD 9841, located at 3251 and 3261 Sunrise Boulevard, northeast corner of Sunrise Boulevard and Monir Circle 072-0410-094-0000.
Okay. And staff, I think we have a report.
I have a black screen.
She's got a black screen?
It won't do anything. Okay, now wait a second.
He's had to vote, and everything works fine.
Okay.
Okay, staff report.
Okay.
Were you ready?
But it doesn't go anywhere. See? Okay, all right. I don't need that anyway. Okay. I got it. I got it. I got it.
They're examining why our electronic voting is not automatically tallying up. I think right now Mr. Gatewood is the only one who is electronically voting, which makes it kind of interesting. Okay, are we good?
We're suspicious.
Suspicious. Okay, go ahead with the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. June Cows for the Planning Department. So tonight is Sunrise Palms. This project request is for a conditional use permit to allow for service station, convenience store sale of alcoholic beverages, and drive-through sales and services, an administrative use permit, and that's for the restaurant use for the project site, and a major design review for two buildings and a fuel canopy. Also, a letter of public convenience necessity, and that's for the alcohol, beer, and wine sales within this convenience store. So the site location is at the northeast corner of Sunrise Boulevard and Monir Circle, one existing right-in, right-out driveways on Sunrise Boulevard, and it does have existing sidewalks on those streets. This site is 1.44 acres. So it's within the light industrial zone. Looking at the proposed site plan, the service station is with six pumps, 3,200 square-foot convenience store with a drive-through car wash, 1,200 square-foot tenant space, that's in Building 1. So Building 2 up along Monir Circle is a 2,100 square-foot drive-through restaurant and a 1,100 square-foot tenant space. So review of conditional use permit is intended to ensure that the use is compatible with the nearby uses, and that, again, is for the service station, convenience store, drive-through sales and services, and the sale of alcoholic beverages. So just to look at that site one more time, multi-use light industrial to the north, light manufacturing to the east, a self-storage facility is to the south, and then the Folsom Canal is to the west with office and residential subdivision. The zoning ordinance does include standards for the convenience store, drive-in and drive-through sales and service, and service station. And these standards relate to site design, lighting, maintenance, security plan, and window placement, and access to the, to the site. So the proposed project is consistent with these standards. For conditional use permit hours of operation, the applicant is proposing for the 24-hour operation for the service station and convenience store, and a 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM operation for the self-service car wash. And at this time, they don't have a restaurant tenant for the second pad building, so there's no limited operation time. For the letter of public convenience and necessity, the alcohol beverage sales within the convenience store is just for beer and wine, and the, it's required for this location through ABC. The applicant has provided justification, development comprised of many complementary uses, it serves the local area, and travelers on Sunrise Boulevard, and the convenience store includes a broad array of products. With the sale of beer and wine, customer can make one trip, and the applicant is committing to a security and control plan. And that is included on Attachment 5 with your staff report. So the administrative use permit, the applicant is requesting that the restaurant use be allowed for the project site, and that's in order to provide flexibility for future tenants. The major design review, looking at the site design, buildings are located adjacent Sunrise Boulevard and Monir Circle, and that, the buildings define and enhance street corners and the edges. A 25-foot-wide landscape buffer is along Sunrise Boulevard and Monir Circle, and the drive-through lanes are located between the landscape buffer and buildings. So both drive-through lanes include a low wall between the landscape buffer and drive-through lane. So we're looking at the building elevations, the various roofline and wall planes with pillars, trellis, and windows in different colors to provide variation and architectural interest. So the circle, that is the Circle K elevation, which is on the east elevation, that is facing inside the site. So it's facing the parking lot and the fuel canopy. The elevation to the south, you can see there's a trellis over the car wash drive-through And this is the north elevation and the west elevation. So the west elevation, the one on the bottom, that's the one facing Sunrise Boulevard. This is pad building number two, the west and north elevation, and then the east and south elevation. The south elevation, the one on the bottom, that one's, that elevation is facing Monir Circle. In the elevation, it does not show the trellis, but there's a trellis that's gonna go over the drive-through window. So it's to provide some shade coverage or, from, or, from the weather, if there's any rain. It is a southern exposure. So the fuel canopy does include the same brown-toned brick on the columns. Proposed landscape plan does show the 25-foot-wide landscaping buffer. Also, on the right-in, right-out driveway, you can see the landscape extends up, and then access to the site is, is further up, which would be the west side of this project. And that allows for anybody coming into the site longer queuing, so when backup traffic on the Sunrise Boulevard. And here's the site perspective. So this is traveling south on Sunrise Boulevard, and traveling north on Sunrise Boulevard. The project is exempt from California Quality Act 15183. It's consistent with the community plan, general plan or zoning, and staff recommends the city council find the project to be in compliance with CEQA and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit, the administrative use permit, major design review, and letter of public convenience and necessity for the alcohol beverages sales for wine and beer within the convenience store subject to findings, project plans, and conditions of approval. And with that, the applicant is here. If you had any questions?
I am going to open the public hearing. Do we have any cards turned in on this item?
We do. Tara Colvin-Bach.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, Legal Counsel, City Manager. Happy New Year. When I looked at this proposal, I just had some questions on it. One is that it seems like there's a lot of gas stations in that area. There's Costco, and then there's two on the other adjacent on, on White Rock Road. So that was just a concern when I was thinking, do we really need this? But obviously, someone must think that there is the possibility of need, otherwise, we wouldn't have that. I do like how the building is set up and how the gas pumps are in the back, not in the front, facing Sunrise. The other thing I was concerned about is Monir Circle, I thought that was gonna end up getting extended as part of International. So how is that gonna impact their plan on that road? Because isn't that eventually going to be, going out to the new development? So that, those were my concerns on it.
They're doing the ultimate right-of-way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good questions.
But thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on this? Very good. Council comments.
I, do you have questions? Okay, I have questions. Okay. So I really do like the project also, and I, while I agree with Tara that there are gas stations in the area, on the other hand, there used to be Shell on that northeast corner of White Rock and Sunrise, and it's not there anymore, so they seem to have found a place to replace the Shell station close by. And I suspect for everybody coming from south in Rancho Cordova or up Sunrise Boulevard, this will be extremely convenient because it's on the way to work. And I like the buildings. I had only one comment about the, the architecture, and, because you caught the one about the fact that there was no trellis or no covering over the drive-through window, and that's important. But it also struck me that on what is basically the south side of the main building, where even though it faces into the project, it could really use, no, keep going. This one, the picture on the top, it could really use the same trellis on those two, two segments in, on either side.
What are you talking about?
Right here, and right here.
You stand the trellis underneath the window?
But that's, that's a, a sort of a door. But just the decorative trellis, like they've used in other places. And, and I appreciate your clarifying that the front door to the Circle K is actually on the inside of the parking lot, because on their site plan, it shows up facing Sunrise. It's flipped. So I appreciate that. I have a question about the circulation. The implication is that there is, that the driveway that comes from Sunrise, the right-in, right-out driveway, is an off-site driveway on this piece of property belonging to P's Trust. And so, Darcy, did you get an answer on that?
I had the same question about this.
Yes, the applicant, the owner, does have access agreement with that driveway to the north.
Okay, so do we have a condition of approval to, to reflect that?
They provided the, I think, the deed, a copy of the grant or deed.
Okay. Super. All right. Because, yes, it's obvious they need access from Sunrise, but, but it wasn't clear. And in terms of circulation, then just, just a comment that when we incorporated, we, we took the, the approach that we would not copy Sacramento County, that we would, we would require the drive-throughs to be on the interior of a project, not between the building and the landscaping or the public, or the public right-of-way. And the only time that I can recall that we have approved that was for Chick-fil-A, simply because the way in which the circulation in that shopping center got so dramatically messed up, there was no other place to put it. And I, I have seen David stuck on Sunrise Boulevard, waiting for the traffic to clear so he could turn westbound on Zinfandel, because the traffic from Chick-fil-A was backed up on the Zinfandel. So, the whole thing, it all has, so that's just a question. They seem to have done a lot of landscaping, and they've got a little wall, although when everybody drives an SUV, I'm not sure the wall is of any value anymore, because your headlights are, are above the wall. But, but that was just a question. And, and the other questions that I have, I don't mind, personally, I don't mind giving them a PCN letter. Obviously, they need it, and that's appropriate. But going back a good 20 years, even under the county... But going back a good 20 years, even under the county, there has not been a 24-hour liquor sales approved in Rancho Cordova. The county stopped approving 24/7 liquor sales back sometime in the late 90s, and we have never approved one, and it does not seem appropriate to me that they should be selling liquor between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, 11:00 at night or 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning. I read the, the franchisee's five-page letter. I appreciate the, the thought that went into the letter, but everywhere, the suggestion is that this will be 24/7, and I personally don't think that's appropriate. I also was uncomfortable that the standard conditions that you find in other jurisdictions that call out what kinds of public, what kinds of safety measures they're going to use are not actually written down clearly for all to see, it defers to the police department, and I appreciate their attention to detail. But in the past, in other jurisdictions, I've seen these 14 or 24 different conditions spelled out in the conditions of approval. And from my perspective, that's the kind of thing where it's always important to be upfront about it. The gentleman makes a comment about the fact that any graffiti shall be removed or painted over within 72 hours, and I'm sure we'd all like it to be 24 hours instead of 72 hours. And then it said litter, number, number four and five in his letter said, litter shall be removed daily from the premises, but then it says, all areas under control of the licensee shall be swept and cleaned only weekly. So, which is it going to be? And then he has another item, number nine, the sale of products other than alcoholic beverages, measured by gross receipts on an annual basis, shall not exceed the annual sales of alcoholic beverage products, measured by gross receipts, and it's got to be the other way around.
Presumably.
Sure, that's what was meant. So if we could just all think about the, the, the site plan, yes, it's important that the, the gas fueling stations be on the interior of the property, but do we really want the drive-through lanes on the exterior of the property, of the exterior of the buildings? And we need to do something about the hours that they are allowed to sell alcohol. Those would be my requests.
Staff, do you want to respond to any of, any of those?
On the sale for alcohol beverages, looking at the ABC site as far as beer and wine, when you can sell it, I would classify staff as being reserved. We had to look it up on the staff, on the website, because we didn't know automatically what the hours were, but stop selling at 2:00 a.m., and then they can start selling at 6:00 a.m. So they were not requesting 24-hour alcohol sales. They're just complying with the ABC. However, the convenience store and service station would be 24-hour operation.
And that's not a problem. CVS is 24 hours, okay? But, but it just, it's not appropriate to sell between 11:00 and 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning. Nobody, like I said, nobody around here has been approved to do that for a good 20 years.
Yeah, we've sort of had functional standards as a city, saying that there were certain things we always imposed with the PCN at a gas station. Another one Linda didn't mention is single container sales.
Yeah, because he actually, that's in it too.
That's, that's in there. But usually, we have these written out as conditions.
Yeah.
Associated with the PCN.
Maybe, I did let the applicant know that the sale of beer and wine was going to come up as a question, so they might want to...
Well, and, and I would just say one thing about the single use, because I know that's, that's something that the City of SAC has been struggling with, because when you talk about the craft beer industry and a lot of other things, that those are all single use, you're buying a pint or whatever, so, and there has been some studies that, that, some stereotypical reasons of who would drink a single use. So I, I, that's one I, I would caution against being concerned about. I am concerned about the hours, because yeah, I, I, there's nobody that I know of that allows to do it. And every time we've ever approved anyone like this, or send in one of those letters, we've always had, and it's not 2:00 o'clock, it's like 10:00 o'clock. I want to say, I want to say the Safeway gas station was like 8:00, if I, if I remember.
Don't remember.
It was a lot earlier. One, one other thing that I, I also wanted to bring up, so I, I'm not comfortable with 2:00 o'clock. 10, you said 11?
10 or 11.
I, to me, I'd err on, at 10:00, especially considering the traffic that they're seeing at that time of night on that part of Sunrise Boulevard, you know, I mean, that, that's a heavily traffic thoroughfare for, for the business park, the industrial park, like there, there's not going to be a lot of uses, or people picking up at that time in that area of Sunrise Boulevard.
And after 8:00 o'clock, the speeds get atrocious.
Yeah. So I wouldn't be comfortable with that. I would point out, you're right to a certain extent on the stacking of Chick-fil-A, but we did allow it at the Arco at Douglas and, and Sunrise. But the reason we did was the elevation change from the road to where that wall was, because they put in a parapet wall of three feet or four feet or something like that, but they're still 10 feet above the road. These got, this will not. So my, my frustration is, how did this design get to us looking like that, if you, if we were looking at the standards and knowing that's not something that we allow?
This is something that we talked with the applicant right off, having the fuel canopy in the back and the parking interior, so it just became a question of the drive-through versus the parking and the fuel canopy. And then the fact that the landscaping and the low-screen wall, and we did look at Chick-fil-A and Arco, and also the Arista del Sol retail site has the drive-throughs, or Anatoli Retail, sorry, site does have their drive-through along the road, Sunrise Boulevard.
Okay. That's true. It, hmm, is this stacking opposite of traffic, though? The cars are going to be facing oppos, opposite traffic, correct? That was, that was actually the, the bigger...
In both, in both locations, it, it will be facing, it will be facing oncoming traffic. Because you're coming out, you're coming out of the car wash, heading south down Sunrise, and you're, and you're coming through the drive-through headed east on Moner.
If, if we look at something like, and I know, I mean, this has like two, there's two streets adjoining this, but if you look at something like the subway north of there, I mean, they figured out how to take that space, put a drive-through in the back, and, and make it work. I just, I, like, we have a standard for this. I just don't understand how it wasn't brought to us looking like that. And I, and again, this is the same beef I had when Chick-fil-A came, and then Chick-fil-A really stuck to their guns, and I said, okay, fine, I guess I'll, I'll, you know, I'll hold my nose and vote for it because of how bad that shopping center was. This is a brand-new place that's completely bare, and why is the city in front of me?
Even on the design, the city design guidelines, they do state on the corners that buildings are going to be up against the, up the road. So again, it was the parking and the fuel canopy. We did look at it as several different avenues with the drive-throughs at the request of the applicant, and we felt, staff felt that the low wall, although I have to point out...
Normally, you wouldn't, why wouldn't we put the canopy up on the corner? And put these two buildings set back from the...
Well, the code definitely calls for buildings on the street, as opposed to parking...
Decision on the street. If they want drive-throughs like that, then, then fit it into the code.
And as a planner, I have represented almost every fast feeder there is in a whole host of jurisdictions all over Northern California, from here to Lompoc. And I know it's difficult, but it can be done. I guess maybe what staff is seeing in this particular case, the trade-off is the advantage of, which is the more aesthetic, putting the gas, putting the canopy in the rear of the building, or putting the drive-through lane in the rear of the building?
I mean, if I, if I was the property owner and I owned a gas station, I'd want it to be seen from the street. To me, that makes way more sense. So, so here's, I'm supportive of the project. It makes complete sense as far as a use on that corner. The, the member of the public that commented that Moner's someday going to be the entrance way into Rio and a lot of other areas, this is a very obvious use. I am concerned that, you know, California fuel standards and everything else, that having lots of gas stations as we move to a fuelless fleet in the future, how many of these do we necessarily have? But I will say, living not far from there, all of the gas stations are always busy. Yes, Costco is always busy, Arco is always busy and running out of gas.
And look what Costco's doing, adding 12 more.
Yeah, they're putting all these other pumps. So I, 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 I see the demand, it's a good use, I just don't think it's a, it's a, it's a good design, and, and it doesn't meet our standard. So that's the frustrating part, is like, we have rules for this, so, you know, again, I'm just a little frustrated.
Linda?
Yeah, and I have one more thing that I think we probably need to, to, to talk about, just to make sure that we consciously know what we're doing here. As I read this with little midget type, it seemed to me that the building on Moner, where it shows the drive-through, might have said that the tenant was for Chick-fil-A, and it hit me all of a sudden, since we've been talking about Chick-fil-A. If you consider the fact that we've got a drive-through restaurant, a drive-through car wash, and two potential other restaurant spaces in here, I, we all want these people to be wildly successful, but what happens if they are as successful as Chick-fil-A, and they get as many customers as Chick-fil-A? And this is a very small corner.
Only Chick-fil-A has this problem, so.
This is a very small corner.
Even both.
Is it over, is it overloaded?
Mayor Sander, if I could provide some clarification in terms of what our code standards are for drive-throughs, so for all drive-throughs, whether it's a bank or a food drive-through, the standard actually states that the actual entrance and the exit of the driveway can't be located closer than 25 feet to an intersection or an ingress and an egress.
Right.
So from the standard of where the entrance to that drive aisle is and the exit, it is meeting that standard. While we do understand what council is stating is that, just in general, it has been your desire to not have the drive aisles adjacent to the roadway. So in terms of our...
Have a standard for that?
No, we don't have a standard that says that the drive aisle can't be adjacent to the roadway. It has specific standards about location and stacking, and it does meet that, but we don't have a standard that says it can't be adjacent to the roadway. So in this, this case, through aesthetics, it was the preferred option to have the fueling canopy in the rear and provide some additional landscaping and trellis and architectural features to help buffer that, that drive aisle from the public right-of-way.
But would, I mean, but wouldn't, if I owned a gas station, I would want it to be near the street.
You know, I think there's...
Where people driving by can see it as they're getting to it. Why would we, why would we hide that?
The graphic that was presented that showed the site plan with landscaping, next one, there. So if you're northbound on Sunrise, this is what you would see to the right.
Right.
Correct.
So the pumps are pretty visible there.
Yeah. Because there's nothing, nothing between them.
Right, because these trees are, you know, designed not to get big.
And it really is flat as a board.
So aesthetically, in keeping and trying to pull those buildings forward to the street, this was the alternative that we worked through with the applicant, to try to have that better aesthetic along Sunrise Boulevard.
And you definitely want to be worried about traffic on and off of Sunrise, obviously. You can't have multiple drive-lanes in and out of, out of this parcel due to the volume of traffic on Sunrise.
And you're right, the Craig Mirren loose leaves in winter...
Yeah, it's got to be, it's got to be tight wherever, wherever it is.
I have a question to Cyrus. When we built that international bridge, it was set as wide as it is because we knew in the future it was going to go across Sunrise into Rio de Janeiro. Is that still going to be able to be done?
Well, to some extent, it would not have the ultimate width that we need for the project. When the time comes, we probably have to purchase some property and some additional right-of-way to do it. But to the extent that we could require this project to set back their building, we've done that.
So this will have...
Yeah.
But it, it would not have the ultimate width that we need.
This is the reason for the 25-foot landscape, that they, they're putting their buildings at the ultimate right-of-way, at an appropriate place for the ultimate right-of-way, but the, the rest of it's going into landscaping, the excess.
So staff, do we, do we consider in this at all the number of gas stations on Sunrise? Because I think by my count, just mentally, it's, it's eight between Folsom Boulevard and, and Douglas.
We don't have any standards that address over-concentration of this particular type of use.
And do we have a, a set, set of standards that we would apply to gas stations requesting PCN elsewhere? Because I, I know, I mean, going back to Corpac, we had a set of things we always applied to gas stations. Do you, as staff, have that somewhere, the sort of the standard conditions?
We generally take the lead from what we get from PD on particular conditions that they want to place upon a PCN. In this case, in speaking with the chief, this one didn't particularly propose any controversial issues or aren't any issues in the area, so at this time, they haven't proposed to do, such as you had suggested earlier, like limitations on single-serve. But certainly, if there are concerns with that, as well as the site plan, we could, with council's direction, continue the item and work on some layouts of the redesign of the site, as well as adding some additional conditions for the PCN, if that's what the council needs.
Okay. Are there other council questions? If not, I think I'm going to hear from the applicant. Would the applicant like to make comments? Now that you've heard all of our questions?
Lots of questions.
Lots of questions.
I'm not sure if we're going to have answers to everything, but we'll do our best. So my name is Jerry Appelis from Burrell Consulting Group, and Tom Simon is here to my right. He's a property owner, and his family owns the property for many, many years. Just a little bit of background on, on this site, Tom and I were talking about it while you guys were throwing out questions, and he started trying to develop this property back in the 90s for this exact corner. Our company has been involved with this since early 2000, and I think about 2003 or 2004.
Wow.
So this being 2020 now, by the way, Happy New Year to everybody. But that's about 17 years, and I didn't even realize that until we were just talking. So we've known each other for over 20 years now. So we've been trying to get this thing developed for almost 20 years, and just kind of round and off, just for simplicity, don't quote me exactly. But we even got to the point where we had a design review permit approved, for those of you that were on the council at that time, I don't know if you, you would recall that?
One of our first projects, Jerry.
Yeah.
Pretty early.
Yeah, it was. And so we actually got it approved by city council, got the site plan, the site engineering approved, and actually started construction on the site. Issues come up, one was the recession. There were other issues with the respective discussion about right-of-way that Mr. Simon's family had with the city, and that went through a lot of discussion, and I was levered at that. And it was, it's settled on, after the discussion, for an agreement for where the ultimate right-of-way was. And to kind of speak a little bit for Cyrus, is that the right, ultimate right-of-way was decided in, set in stone, I guess, so to speak. And so we respect that. This site plan does respect that, adheres to that. There was some early discussion, the application, about maybe it's going to move, and then it didn't move. And so the, with the, one of the questions was, do we have enough width on our property? According to the city, there's enough width to extend International across to the Rio de Janeiro project. Other right-of-ways that we know are going to be, have to be required down the road, but those are not part of this project, that we're just representing the corner piece right now. We have the 25-foot setback. After all these takes between Sunrise and Moner, and the widening, and International coming through and all that stuff, June mentioned that we only have a little less than one and a half acres. We don't have a big shopping center where there's some discussion, but I believe you're talking about the Chick-fil-A on Sunrise, which has a big shopping center. With a bigger site, you can get more flexibility. This site doesn't have that flexibility, so what happens? And I'm going to go to the comment about the drive-throughs being in the front. One of the things that we understood when we restarted the project about three, four years ago, whenever it was, everybody kind of liked the, is it Arco site?
That's right.
Yeah, Arco site down the street where the rail lease is at. And it has a drive-through in the front. The architecture is beautiful. We ended up modeling a lot of the themes, not copying, but modeling and taking a lot of cues, because that was felt, from our understanding, is that was something that the city... of cues because that was felt from our understanding is that was something that the city was very happy with. And so there's a lot of those kind of elements in this project. If the thought is to keep the buildings forward, which is very common request by many jurisdictions, and put the drive-throughs behind, one of the things on this side, you can have to think about it, if we flip the drive-throughs on the back of the building, then everybody that parks in the whole property is going to have to walk, excuse me, walk through the drive-through aisle to get to the building and that's where the front door is going to be. That, the lease gets really, really awkward. And I wouldn't suggest that. And there's not much, because of the nature of the site, it's very difficult to come up with a different idea. I mean, I was kind of mentally going through it and I don't know if anybody has any other ideas, but that's, you know, so we're kind of taking, we want to articulate the site, articulate the corner, lend the architecture to it. Typically, most jurisdictions want to put the, the gas canopy in the back is very common and that's what we do typically, you know, a lot of sites, we do a lot of work for various service station clients and they're typically traditionally not very happy with that, but they accept it because they know that a lot of jurisdictions prefer that. And so that's, that's kind of, I guess, is that equal compromise where everybody's equally unhappy? And so that must mean it's really good because everybody's equally unhappy. So whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, nobody's going to be totally happy and that's probably a good thing too. So that's kind of where the site plan came, came from, the right-of-way dedication. We tried to landscape it very well and I think we did a good job. I think that was the comments and everybody was kind of bouncing around and trying to cover all the comments about the site plan. They don't want to separate that conversation to the alcohol element. So is there any questions about the site planning?
Yeah.
And again, these are our thoughts.
Yeah, can I ask you just one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the joint trash enclosure really on Sunrise? Is that little white building there, is that the trash enclosure?
Yes.
You can't put that in the rear?
We could take a look at that. We could, we could, we could take, one is...
I realize, I know you want to do it.
We have a cross-access easement along the back of the property, which is, when I say the back, the side opposite Sunrise, the north-south.
The east side.
The east side, thank you. The east side of the property. So we can't put the, the trash enclosure within that easement because that's a cross-access easement to get to the adjacent property, but we could try to set it elsewhere. That's not a problem. Oh, one question that came up by multiple commenters. Mr. Simon is the owner of the property, the, just, just in, just to get a sense of the demand, a lot of people were talking about, and it's a great question, you know, we're going to go electric and go green and all this, why are we building another gas station? The property is in escrow and hopefully going to be sold soon, subject to contractual elements of that being satisfied. If it doesn't get sold by this one, to this one person that's in escrow, there are two or three different other companies that are very interested in it. And so there's a question, kind of a theme about demand and, well, I don't know if this is a good gas station. There's three companies that are experienced in oil or gas sales, fuel sales, sea source sales, they're very interested in the site. And they, it came on their radar screen because of the hearings and they called Mr. Simon's family, go, would you like to sell? He goes, oh, sorry, it's in escrow, but let me...
I have no doubt that it will perform well. If, if well-kept, because like the Shell station lost its, its franchisee or whatever name and they, they went with something else.
So it really is Shell and Circle K right now?
It is right now and those, you know, brands change sometimes.
And we assume that, that Jack, the gentleman who wrote the letter is a major franchisee for Circle K?
Yeah, and a very experienced operator.
Yeah, he sounds like it.
Again, I have no doubt that demand for that, for all of this product on that corner will only grow in the future, especially if that becomes the, you know, an entry point into Rio de Janeiro. Like I, I don't question that. I question 30 years from now, what are we going to do with a lot of gas stations? It, it's a problem all over the country. So I, you know, I'm definitely not saying to turn, that I would turn this down because of that. It's just something that I wanted to...
I just wanted to throw that out there, so.
Um, can I, can I ask a question about the PCN letter and the, the alcohol sales?
Yeah.
Why would you, what is that, what is it writing now, the standard would be till 2P, 2:00 AM?
Just like bars.
Well, just by the ABC license, that's what they restrict.
To statewide regulation.
That's just the, the bare minimum.
The basics.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and we, I mean, to make it clear, there are a handful of gas stations, even in other areas, that have come to us and asked for those letters and we said no. I'm definitely not, I, I don't need to say no, I don't think there's an over-concentration of it there. You'd be one of the only ones selling fairly late. I'm trying to think when Rayleigh's closes, 10?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock?
That's when I get my wine.
The pizza place down in Anatolia closes at midnight, I want to say, or something like that. But the brewery that's, you know, you know, a stone's throw away from you, I want to say, Claim State closes at 8:00. I can't remember when Bernie Barrel closes, but maybe 10:00? I know the pizza place in Anatolia gets really busy from 8:00 to 10:00 when Claim State closes, because people leave there and go get pizza and keep drinking beer till 10:00. And those are the busiest two hours that they have on Friday and Saturday night. So I would be comfortable with 10:00?
Well, we, we understand your comments. One briefly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, I was just, I'm comfortable with, with 10:00 and sharing also that we have flat-out said no to existing gas stations and, 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 and small markets in other parts of the city.
Let's talk, I want to talk about that specifically. We became aware, up till this morning, we thought there was an issue about the alcohol, but there is, there's a question about it and we understand that. We received some contact from June this morning about, there's some questions from one or two of the council members with respect to that. Now, our, the purchaser of the property, he's not here, he's from Southern California, wasn't expecting this level of, of comment.
Grutny.
I'm trying to be nice. So deliberation and he's unfortunately not here. He did check the newest, one of the newest gas stations down the street in front of Rayleigh's. And his email to me was, and he told me, and you got the same email, was, it said, he said 24 hours, but that, it can't be 24 hours, it has to be up to 2.
According to the standard.
Yeah, according to the standard, it's under the ABC standard.
Which is 2 to 6.
So it's close, they can't sell alcohol between 2:00 to 6:00. Does that, did they quote that correctly?
2:00, right.
I didn't.
2:00 to 6:00.
2:00 to 6:00. And what we're asking, what we're asking is, and we believe, and have you researched some other service stations in the area? We're...
I don't remember voting on a PCN letter for that.
No.
Because I know they didn't have their license when they opened. They didn't get that till afterwards.
That's right, that wasn't, they did have a PCN because that, we were surprised with that area because there's not very many, but that when we looked at the clubhouse at a alcohol permit and they did go through a letter of PCN, but...
And that got on our agenda?
Yes.
Well, I don't remember that. I don't remember that they're selling anything in it.
I know we had, they could not sell individual, but I'd have to double-check on the hours.
And I would have said the same thing that I just said, which is that depending on who you ask, that, that's a pretty, that's a pretty loaded issue, the single, the single use anymore or single item. I don't recall ever discussing that here or having that on an agenda unless it got snuck in on a consent, which those usually aren't.
You want to finish, finish what you were saying?
I know, I, the other thing is, I lived so close, I probably would have to recuse myself and I don't remember doing that.
You, yes, you recused yourself.
From the design.
And so did...
No, no, I didn't, because I didn't live there then. When, when we went through design, I lived further away.
Click on the PCN, I don't recall.
Did you have something to continue with?
I don't think so.
Comments?
Yeah, I think one of the main things is that, you know, there's got to be a leveled playing field with retail. Retail's a tough business right now and I think everybody knows that with the internet and everything else like that, it's very tough, even though there's a lot of demand, you have to watch your pennies, your Ps, your Qs, whatever you want to call them. And so to be at a competitive disadvantage with your neighbors is very, very, I don't know, is unfair. And this project that we're talking about was just approved just a few years ago. I had the staff report as dated 2016.
Yeah, I think if you look around our community and other communities, what you'll see is a checkerboard of requirements regarding liquor sales, because things were done at different times, when different movements were going on, whenever issues were up, when, you know, homelessness spiked, I'm sure regulations spiked. Some things require pure ABC approval, the city doesn't get to comment, other things require the city to do a PCN letter. So if you looked at a map of the county, you would see those requirements all over the place, block by block, because it's also regulated by Census tract, which Census tracts don't follow any logical boundary. So it's not even like a city has total control of its ABC licenses when there's the direct ABC route of getting a liquor license.
I also have to say that just because we made a mistake in one location is not a good reason to make a mistake in another location.
Do you have, do you have another comment?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
Your Excellency Mayor David Sander.
That's a nice, we could, we could stick with that.
And you know, respectful council members, you know, Jerry said, my name is Tom Simon and I am one of the owners of this property. We've been doing business in the city of Franchi Cordova since early 1980 and we've been here for many, many years in the city. And we have different businesses and retails, warehouses and properties as well. This property, honestly, we had it acquired, I think in 84, I think so. And we had, I believe, seven or eight projects to be built on this property to enhance the city, because we are part of this city. We live here basically. You know, when you work in there, you are living here. You go home, you sleep, you come here, you are awake and you are doing everything in the city. And this property for seven projects, it was shot dead by the city of Franchi Cordova. Many things, I mean, you were talking about the building, the, the front and the back. Yeah, we want it in the front for different buildings. We had, the beginning, you know, that was a warehouse that we wanted to put, one of our business computer warehouse. And then we had a dentist wanted to do the building. And then we had a bank, First Bank wanted to move in and that was the, you know, the best deal for it, as well as, you know, the restaurants and that was shot. A lot of things happened and was shot on this property. I know the city of Franchi Cordova trying to change a lot of things and make it all better and happening, because used to be a lot of junkyard and now it's changed and we want that change, but it's not happening. Every time we were trying to do something, it gets shot. Even at the time we wanted to do, that we had signed everything deals with the banks and then, you know, First Bank was, was going to move in and then we had that problem with the eminent domain case and we went through a big mess. Lot of designs, a lot of from, you know, Mark Marvelli's office, I'm sure you probably know him. And, you know, Jerry, I've been with him for many, many years and I always use the best, you know, engineering and architectural firms, because they know how to, you know, work with the staff and make it happen and enhance it, not to implement my own personal, you know, views and things. They have the design, they know what to do. Finally, now we have agreement to make this a gas station. We have the tenant to make it happen. It went through a lot of design reviews and whatever it has to be done and I still see a lot of obstacles happening. I don't know why. I don't know how much you guys love this property, because it keep getting shot. If you guys love it so much, why don't you guys build on it? Seriously, it's, it's that bad. I have that concern right now, because we are up to the final stages. Staff recommended the project. It is not for me, it's for them. A lot of things in the design, no, I like it in the front, I like it, no, I leave it to the professionals and to the professionals right here. And I don't see this is happening. When it comes, it gets shot. Now, just two days ago, I received this concern from the city and then the new tenant is very concerned about it. We are in escrow and he's very concerned about the hours of operation of the liquor. I don't mind whether you make it 8:00 or 10:00. In fact, honestly, I wish it is not even 8:00, 6:00 personally. But that's a business and they know how to run their business, just like we were running our computer business. The problem is, others, other places, they have it open and they are open from, you know, 6:00 all the way till 2:00. Business competition is very tough. When you have a consumer goes to a place and, oh, I cannot sell it because it is already 11:00. And then he sees the other place, they open at 2:00. You believe that this customer will come back to you? Nobody going to calculate this gas station going to open till 2:00, this gas station will open till 11:00. They just go to the one that, okay, that's the one. That's losing of customers. I agree with them that they are saying this is a major thing, it's going to hurt our business, going to take our sales into somewhere else, because once they go to that, the other side that said they won't come back. I believe that, because we've been in the business of retail, we had over 286 workers just in our business and we know how it goes and what, what happened to the consumer and what happened to their customer. You have to treat the customer with full respect and, you know, service. You lose your service, you lose your clientele when you have difference. So this is unfair, totally unfair, from one gas station to another. One will be open, it's okay, they can sell till 2:00 and the other one cannot, will be restricted. That's total unfair. If you want to, sorry, I'm going to dry my mouth, but if you want to implement it, go ahead, implement it on the whole city. I don't mind. So it becomes for everybody. It's not, you know, what you are mentioning, we did one mistake, so we cannot do the second. It's not that. It's if you want to impose that, yeah, let's happen, let it be on all the gas stations, on all the license of the liquor in city of Franchi Cordova. But I'm just amazed, this property is sitting for so long and we had so many projects and getting shot all the time. Why? Doesn't it, the city wants to enhance the place and make it looks good? Or we always going to see a, just a raw property with dirt in it and we always have to take care of it and just keep going?
Well, that, that is a good question.
I, I am extremely frustrated, even with this. If it doesn't go, I cannot do anything, because this is going to, you know, shut down the project. I have to, I can, even if you approve the project right now with limitation of hours, I cannot approve, because it's going to kill it. I leave, seriously, I leave this to you guys. You guys are the one who decides and when I'm saying, you know, your excellency, yes, you are respectful council members, because you, you, depends on you, on your decision how the city of Franchi Cordova runs and how it appeals to the people and the future of our kids and the community.
That's very well said.
I am part of this community for over 40 years. I leave the decision to all of you. I just wanted to, you know, make it clear.
Well, thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
You know, we've, I think we as a city, as an institution, have been around a little less than half of the amount of time you've been in this community.
Yes, I know. We dealt with Sacramento County. That's why there was so much delays, because nobody can answer us, because the, the city of Franchi Cordova was not incorporated yet.
Right.
And we were, there was no city here, we were, there was an office somewhere, just a small office somewhere else we used to be.
At the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, something like that. I can't remember even where now. Things were very different and now it's getting enhanced. I think we should work together at least.
Absolutely.
We cannot just keep going through attorneys and...
And with regard to the projects that, that you've mentioned, this is the second one this council has seen. Now, city staff may have had...
The council has seen.
Right. The city staff may have had conversations about others. I'm not sure how many of those eight were county, how many of those eight were in the city. There was some litigation involved in between, we heard a little bit about that years, years ago now.
I can say we've been involved with five of them with the city.
Okay, this is the second one we've seen though as a council.
That's why I say the city, city staff, so.
Right. And the other, the other thing about fairness in government, I couldn't agree with you more, because as I, I just described and, and you probably aren't familiar with how Because as I just described, and you probably aren't familiar with how the ABC licenses are processed, but my guess is of those seven gas stations along Sunrise, each one of them probably has a different set of rules with regard to sale because they were all approved at different dates. Some of them direct from ABC, some of them through the county, some of them through us. And so each one of them would have a different, a different set of requirements about when they sell. So we could take like an average of what they are, maybe that would be the most fair thing to do. But it probably isn't fair, even from your perspective, to check just one, this one over here, and say we want the exact same regulations as that one and ignore the other six.
Your Excellency.
We checked the one that was the newest, and that's, we didn't have time to check the rest of them, so we apologize.
And on our end, you probably heard, there's a little, I'd say a little concern among council members that we haven't equally applied, that's the discussion you heard going on here, our sort of standards that we've had for almost 20 years about what hours we impose and what sort of units, we can debate that in the future. But the other sort of restrictions we put in place whenever alcohol is sold. So apparently, if that wasn't applied in that other case, that's a problem for us. And we're also wondering why those same conditions didn't appear here up front. They should have basically been presented to you up front and said, this is our standard whenever we deal with a gas station or any sort of a liquor license or a PCN letter specifically. So that is a live issue, I would say. But with regard to the rest of this, I haven't heard any real opposition to this project from my colleagues. It sounds, I'm speaking for them, but it sounds as if everyone is in favor of this sort of project going forward. What we're debating are details like, can the trash container go here, is there a better spot? Is there a better spot for the drive lanes? I'm guessing perhaps not, based on all the commentary we've heard so far.
I would just say that based on the feedback I got from staff and from you, I'm fine with the design the way it is. I'm just surprised that you wouldn't want the canopy at the corner, but if you don't, your buildings do what you want. Now, to me, really, the only concern is the alcohol sales, but considering there is one down the street, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I would be very interested in the other alcohol sales at a Long Sunrise Boulevard between Folsom Boulevard and Douglas to see what the times do look like.
I can tell you.
But I am surprised about Arco.
I can tell you with great certainty that while we may have made a mistake with the one at Rayleigh's, there are no other gas stations on Sunrise from the river south that we have approved. If you'll remember, the only two gas stations we've ever approved have been the Safeway and Arco. So this makes number three. Because you were right, Jerry. Everything got totally shut down during the recession, and whereas in the first two years that we were a city, everybody wanted to build something or other, all of a sudden, nobody wanted to build anything. And we are just now, truly, it's probably started a year ago, we are just now seeing a strong wave of development come to Rancho Cordova. So this is truly only our third gas station in almost 20 years.
And in my comments, Mr. Simon, I want to thank you for 40 years of commitment to Rancho Cordova and those other jobs in Rancho Cordova and your continued presence here. That's of real value to us. So I don't want you to leave feeling offended, but I do ask your apology for this difficulty of this process.
Absolutely right. You know, me coming here, honestly, I usually don't. But when I came, because I felt like, no, I need to talk to you. I need to talk to the members, I need to talk to the mayor.
And you were very eloquent.
And I needed to understand what's happening. This is not something at two years or 10 years, this is a long-term thing. And what we are seeking is the best, the best for it, but a fairness, a full fairness and the best for all the retail business and the consumer here. Nothing more, nothing less.
So colleagues, I heard a discussion about trellis.
Trellis.
Or that appearance. I've heard discussions about the driveways, I've heard discussions about the PCN letters or anything else.
Well, the two things that are really easy to resolve are just relocating the trash enclosure and adding the trellises on the south side of the Circle K building.
I assume those are non-controversial, presumably.
Yeah.
And me being told that we don't have a standard for drive-throughs for that.
Yeah, and like.
Rule against it.
As Donald said, I would love to have seen this when it was more in the formative stage.
Yeah, me too.
And been able to make some comments, but because having had to do it for a variety of people like KFC, I know it can be done, but I know, everything that Jerry said about having to walk across the drive-through lane is absolutely accurate, and none of the fast food companies like to do it. So from my perspective, it really is just the question of whether they stay open until 2:00 or not.
The drive-through for the building on the left in the image behind me here, that's the.
That's the car wash.
That's the car wash. So that's a very long drive lane for just a car wash.
It's a long building.
Is it possible to put the car wash on the opposite end and eliminate the rest of that drive lane?
No, because it's just a flip. You have to go around the back of the building to get to the car wash.
I would think you would come in and the car wash would be right here, sort of in front of us.
Then the exit would be just as long. It's just.
You couldn't dump into the, like, towards us?
No.
In this, from this image?
You got to go to the length of the building, one way or another.
It's just a gigantic driveway for a car wash, which typically might have maybe two cars in it, maybe.
You know, in all my years, I think that's the first time I ever heard a council member say that the drive-through is too long. So thank you for that.
It's stacking.
Oh, no. We said it with Chick-fil-A.
I would assume.
We definitely said it with Chick-fil-A.
I would assume, I mean, this is my behavior, but car washes aren't quick. So, you know, if I see a car wash with three cars in it, forget it. That's too long.
Me too.
Maybe I'm unusual on that, but.
You don't go to Quick Quack that often.
We can hold 20 here.
Thirty of them in there.
But if there's no shorter way to design that, then I guess that is what it is.
Mayor Sander, I do have some additional information on the last PCN. So some of the additional conditions that the council may be thinking of is when we brought forward a PCN for the Mather Chevron not too long ago, which staff recommended denial of based upon the various crime issues that were occurring. However, we did suggest as part of that initial staff report that if the council were to approve it, there was a list of conditions that came out of RCPD to place upon that PCN. That ultimately was withdrawn. However, the one prior to that, the Arco, the only conditions that were placed upon that that came before the council was to secure that ABC license. However, at the council meeting, you did request an additional condition be placed upon that particular PCN. And that limited the alcohol sales to no single units, so no single serve could be sold at that site, so they couldn't purchase a single, you know, alcoholic, a single bottle of beer. So that was a condition that at the meeting you did add, and that was December of 2017. There are no regulations or stipulations, conditions related to hours of operation on that particular one. You would have, as well as I believe, I recall, Vice Mayor Gatewood also recused himself.
Yeah, okay.
Because you guys have both moved.
That's why I don't remember it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. So in light of that, and while I don't like it, so two comments before I kind of say my position. One, this project is screaming for why we need to have a planning commission. The opportunity for other members of the public to have given the feedback that we just gave that staff hadn't thought of, and I'm not necessarily blaming staff, but the fact that you got here and you found out this weekend that this is going to be the comments that you got, if we had had appointees reviewing this three months ago with you or two months ago before it actually came here for a vote, you would have heard this. So that's the first thing. The fact that we did miss it, in my opinion, but again, I wasn't there, so I couldn't vote on it, I would, I would, I would say we just approve it. Under the circumstances. My opinion too is that this is not going to be busy from 10 to 2:00 in the morning anyways. And where it is, I just, I don't necessarily see it being a huge problem. The only struggle that we have, I want you to understand my concern, is if this is an issue, if we start to have a whole bunch of calls for service at midnight, unless ABC comes and pulls the license, which is very, very unlikely, we suffer that, right? And there's no way for us to go back later and change, right?
Until license is granted, it's in stone.
And really, the point that we're all trying to make here is, we as a city have one opportunity to weigh in on these licenses. After that, we have absolutely no authority whatsoever. There's been, in the seven years I've been on this council, I believe there's been one store that has had their ABC license revoked, once. And I lived very close to there, and it was a horrible store run, and there was tons of problems in the neighborhood that I was in. And that's literally the only one in seven years, and there's probably 15 that should be revoked. I'm not saying that's going to be your operator or in this site, and I don't think this site is similar to the other areas that we're talking about. But the reason that we get so concerned about that and the reason that we have a standard that we should be sharing with property owners when you first bring your plans to us, is this is going to be an issue that we're going to place on you. The fact that Arco got it, considering where you are, personally, I'll be okay with it and I'll vote for it.
I agree with you on that, and I'm going to second that.
So.
I don't know if I necessarily made a motion, but.
Well, anyway, just so, just so, real quick, just so everyone's, so, same, business owner in the region, me, but just so we know, the gasoline station only serves till 11:00 because after that it closes. So there's no reason to have it open till 2:00 AM.
The gas station.
You're saying the Arco closes?
It closes at 11:00, just because I was Googling it, because everyone seems to be twisted up over it.
There you go.
So there is no 2:00 AM, there's nothing that needs to be opened at 2:00 AM because I'm Googling it right now. The one that's over by my house in Anatolia is open till 11:00 and then it closes.
Even on Friday and Saturday?
Even on Friday and Saturday. Just so we're clear.
I'm not buying beer that late.
So, I mean, just because we seem to be twisting up over that, but, I mean, if we feel uncomfortable with it, it's one of those things, we don't feel comfortable putting alcohol sales after 10:00. Just how we are in our city. I mean.
Linda?
Okay, so I'll try a motion. Okay. So I will move that we find the environmental document adequate and appropriate and the project being exempt from CEQA, and that we approve the conditional use permit, the administrative use permit, the major design review with the two very minor changes, finding another place for the trash enclosure and putting the two little trellises on the south side of the Circle K building, and that we approve the request for a PCN letter with the addition of the list of conditions that you attach to the Arco and the addition of the condition to not sell alcohol between 11:00 and 6:00, 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
If I could just look to legal for that, our code does allow the council to add those conditions. However, the findings must accurately reflect those new conditions. So our current findings aren't written in that sense, so if with council's direction, we could modify those if legal's okay with that being done after.
Let's back up really quick just to make sure that everyone has the right information. The Rayleigh's closes at 11:00, the Arco is open 24 hours. So.
Yeah, I see that as well, Arco. It's to be open 24, AM, PM.
They have the ability to, let's put it that way.
Excuse me, if I could interject for just a moment, I believe there's a motion that's been proposed on the floor. There may be amendments to the conditions of approval that will have to be reviewed by the city attorney. As we stated earlier, we're in Ascoa with a party that's not here tonight. So if there is a desire to change the hours of sale, alcohol sales, and that's going to be considered this evening, then we're going to have to request a continuance potentially, and I'll have to confer with my client.
Okay.
Because this is a very big deal, and they're going to have to.
Why don't you hang on for a second?
Their council is what, I'm just going to say, they're going to have to talk to their council on both sides because this is going sideways really bad.
Okay. We're going to close the public comment with that. Thank you, gentlemen. So we have a motion made, I did not hear a second.
I'd like to make a hostile motion.
Hostile.
Isn't that what you call it? No.
Well, it's going to die for lack of a second unless someone seconds the motion.
It's just a substitute motion.
A substitute motion.
Well, no, if nobody seconds it.
If there is a second, then it is a hostile.
There's no second, so I think we are still open for another motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
I'm seconding that.
Motion made and seconded for staff recommendation. Any other discussion?
If you got a second, it's a hostile motion.
Seeing no other discussion, we'll have a roll call vote on staff recommendation. And we'll see if it pops up on our little screen.
We've made some changes. Councilmember Budge.
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, she's testing it.
I did.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Aye.
Mayor Sander.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right.
We do wish you success.
We are moving on to, and I assume previous motion included discussion about, discussion about trash enclosure, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yes. We are moving on to item number 15.2. If the clerk would announce that item.
Does it matter to anybody that the vote didn't come up on the screen?
It was 3-2. No, it was 3-1.
It was 3-1 and 1.
Councilmember McGarvey was?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
He's 3 to 1 to 1.
Oh, yeah, 3 to 1 to 1, technically.
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, the next item. Item 15.2. An ordinance amending the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code related to Title 22, Land Development, Chapter 22.40, Park and Recreation Dedication and Fees.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Sander, members of the council. I don't have an official PowerPoint presentation for you. This is just an item that we're bringing back from a follow-up on our previous code amendment. So in December, we brought forward for you some new standards to incorporate into the code regarding parkland dedication for age-restricted, single-family and multifamily developments as our code currently doesn't address those. At that time, we had presented 1.8 persons per household for a single family. Council had some concerns over that particular number, specifically in regards to the fact that the city's desire has been to uphold a higher parkland dedication and requirement of our developers in terms of amenities and what provide for our residents. So they directed staff to go back and do some additional research. So we did that research, and while we did find that the industry standard for our neighboring jurisdictions is 1.8, staff is suggesting that we go with a 2.0 persons per household to uphold that additional, higher level of standard that the city has been used to and accustomed to in the past. So the amendments that you see before you tonight reflect that 2.0 persons per household for a single family. We've made that adjustment in the ordinance, and that's what we're seeking, a recommendation, or that's what we're recommending for approval for the council tonight.
Okay. Any discussion?
Why didn't we go with the lower one?
To be competitive. Right, because we have a higher standard for parks anyways, we have the X-ray.
Oh, parks. I thought you were saying parking.
No, this is the Quimby standard.
All right, I'm opening.
No, we're good.
Opening the public hearing. Any comments on this item?
No, not at this time.
No cards turned in? Anyone wants to speak on this from the audience? Any council comments on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open for a motion.
I move approval of the staff report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. So we are on to item 15.
Fast, please.
Point 3. And staff report on 15.3. Actually, we should probably announce the item.
Oh, that's where we still got to vote for yours.
The Ranch Special Planning Area, Project Number DD 9725, General Plan Amendment, Rezone to the Ranch Special Planning Area Development Agreement, Affordable Housing Plan, Large Lot and Small Lot Tentative Subdivision Map.
Shouldn't be telling.
Staff report.
June Cowles with the Planning Department. Project request is the Ranch Special Planning Area and certification of an environmental impact report and approve the mitigation monitoring report plan and findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. A general plan amendment, a rezone from Agriculture 82 zoning district special planning area, and a development agreement, affordable housing plan, and last, tentative subdivision maps, large lot and small lot. So the site location is south of Douglas Boulevard and east of Rancho Cordova Parkway, north of the approved Sun Creek specific plan area. This is a 530-acre project site and includes flatlands and some wetlands. Morrison Creek crosses the site. There's 200 acres of a natural preserve to be dedicated and a 275-foot-wide utility easement that's occupied by PG&E and SMUD. Proposed general plan amendment is for low, medium, high-density residential, village, commercial, parks, open space, and of course, the natural resources. So the proposed rezoned special planning area, they're going to be providing, they have provided a handbook which is in your attachment, and that's to create a walkable, livable, and sustainable development that is consistent with the general plan. They are proposing residential neighborhoods with a variety of densities and creating an age-restricted adult neighborhood to provide housing choices for underserved population. So looking at the yellow area, that's the public neighborhood, and then the purple area shows the age-restricted neighborhood, and then the natural preserve. The circles are, the red for the vehicle pedestrian gate locations, and then pedestrian gate locations in yellow, and then the green is for pedestrian access and emergency vehicle access. So just to include what's in the special planning area handbook, I want to call out permitted land uses, so commercial uses are identified in the special planning area handbook. Development standards for residential and commercial. They do provide architectural styles and guidelines, and once the design review is approved by city council, the approvals are vested for 10 years from the date of approval. Underneath the zoning code ordinance, it's for major design, it's three years. So they're requesting a 10-year. The trail system, the ranch provides a citywide network with regional connections. And then the other items, landscaping, wetland, natural preserve, the infrastructure drainage, and the phasing plan. So there are several lot sizes within both neighborhoods. And the commercial is located at the corner of Chrysanthem Boulevard and Rancho Cordova Parkway. High density is located near the commercial, and the age-restricted neighborhood includes high density near the clubhouse location. So looking at the three different neighborhoods, the gateway, local-serving retail opportunities adjacent to the higher-density residential and small lot, single-family.
Staff, could you go back to that image?
Sure.
The lines here, commercial and high-density residential, give me heartburn. To me, this looks like planning, you know, developed in the 1930s, where here's this color of dirt and here's this color of dirt. I would much rather see something totally mixed-use here that eliminates that boundary between commercial and high-density residential. We have to at least provide them with that option, I think.
More like Cat Village.
Exactly. Where you could have residential above retailer office or mixed-in with, as opposed to, on this side of the line, it's just purely residential. On this part of the line, it's just purely commercial. It seems very 20th century to plan that sort of a corner with that kind of a mix.
So the Parkview neighborhood, this provides a traditional single-family neighborhood that also includes alley-loaded lots. And so that area, the alley-loaded, is north of Chrysanthem and just east of Rancho Cordova Parkway, or across where the commercial district would be. This is the age-restricted neighborhood, Four Seasons. So it is on north and south of Chrysanthem Boulevard. In the recreation center and parks, there is a perimeter trail going around the age-restricted neighborhood, which would be open to the public.
Completely encircling it? Or just on the north and west side?
Just on the. It's on the north and, yeah, west.
Yeah, okay. The way you said that, it sounded like it lapped it.
Right. So overall circulation plan, there's artillery streets, that's Chrysanthem, which is four lanes, and the red star shows general location of pedestrian and bicycle access push button. One uninterrupted north-south undercrossing, and that's where the bridge is going over the natural preserve area. Widening Rancho Cordova Parkway from two lanes to four lanes, and construction North Campus Road for curb, gutter, sidewalk, and one travel lane adjacent to the project's southern boundary. So for the vehicle and pedestrian gate locations, there are six vehicle gates open during the day and then closed at night. The pedestrian gates would only be open to the Four Seasons residents. The trail, again, along the natural preserve is open to the public. So do you anticipate that trail is how kids would get to school because they can't walk through Four Seasons? Yes. Because the high school is directly on the other side of that north campus loop. Correct. Sort of. Right, so that trail is open to the public to go north and south to and from the high school site. I mean, it's probably in the EIR somewhere, but the one thing I didn't actually see was an exhibit that showed what was around the project to any extent, or what was planned for around the project. It's like, somebody asked at a conference years ago, does your jurisdictional map stop at your city boundaries? And if it does, your transportation network's going to be flawed because it doesn't go anywhere.
Are there bike trails around both of these? So the yellow part on the top, on the north end, is there a bike trail going around that that's going to be connected into the bike trail that's on the other side?
So this is the trail and trailhead locations, proposed trail network, and then a Class 1 trail.
Have we looked at a possible cycle track between these two where it meets Chrysanthem? Where you have, like, we did it root here, where you have protected bike lanes from the cars?
Yeah, I have to check with.
I mean, it's not a very long stretch, but it would make a heck of a lot of sense if we're assuming.
On Chrysanthem.
On Chrysanthem, in between the two. So I'm just saying, like, right there.
It's a Corps of Engineers issue, potentially, depending on what.
How much wider you got to make or whatever.
Allowed.
The bridge is narrow.
If this is a bike trail already, I'm just saying, is there a way to make that a protected bike trail from cars? In that one spot where they meet?
It doesn't.
Because the rest of this, if they're going around, like, if I live here and I'm riding my bike, this is the one time I'm getting near cars, until I'm crossing the street.
Yeah, it looks like there's a trail connection in this graphic. I don't know what the nature of that connection is.
It says proposed trail network. Class 1 is not touching roads, right, essentially, is that?
Right.
So is there a way to upgrade that little spot to Class 1 in some way?
I'd have to check with Public Works.
Yeah, Albert, we might need a little clarification on the legend here.
This is not a deal breaker for me, but if there's a way that.
The way in which trail network is identified, I mean, presumably, this is not a class, you know, alongside a roadway. This is a separate trail. So if you want to.
Good evening, Mayor Sander and councilmembers, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And that's an excellent point, Councilmember Terry, and that's something we could certainly work with the applicant to ensure that there is adequate bicycle connection between those two halves of the trail on either side of the preserve.
Okay. I mean, it would be nice if that was something that could be accomplished there.
It would be kind of ridiculous if it wasn't there. If you think about these two trail, you know, networks basically coming this close without touching in an off-road manner.
Well, that's what I'm saying, everything else is off-road, like, that's the one spot you're going to run into it. The other two are tunnels?
See, he's also talking about safety. He's talking about separation between the bike lane and the roadway.
And again, if you look at the trail that was put in in between Cavala over to, essentially to McGarvey, right? Like, that's a fantastic way for kids to get to school. I mean, this is setting up to make a lot of sense, especially considering it's a gated community, they're not going to get to go through. You've set this up very nicely, except for right there. If it's not. And if that's a bike lane for 50 feet, or 100 feet, or whatever it is, that's unfortunate.
Typically, what would be done would be a widened sidewalk connection section that would allow for multi-use, including pedestrians and cyclists on that section.
Yeah, I don't like bikes on sidewalks, but that's... There's something in between there, that maybe, as a goal, if we can find funding for it, if we can find a grant or something like we did with the trail down from Cavala to Anatolia, it'd be great. So something to keep in mind, I get this isn't all going to get built tomorrow, but if there is an opportunity at some point to address that, safe routes to school funding, or something else like that, that would be great.
So, Albert, there's probably a cross-section available of design for that particular connection?
Thank you, and we can definitely, I definitely understand your direction, and we can work closely with the applicant to come up with something that meets the standard of care and will be safe.
But it could be, am I correct, it could be a Corps of Engineers issue of they allowed so much width for a road connection here through the preserve, and that's it?
That I'd have to look into.
Okay. I know previously we faced that sort of a barrier, and we have had some success in the trail you mentioned in negotiating our way through that, that sort of a barrier. So I won't say it's impossible, it's just a bit of a hurdle.
Building the one we did was a hurdle, so.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think I can readily find it using even my fancy new app here.
Page 720.
Did you find it?
It's only 410 pages.
Section A.
And to be totally. To be crystal clear, since the question of the tunnels was brought up, there is an undercrossing on the east side of the bridge, going underneath the bridge. On, crossing on the west side of the bridge, there will be a pedestrian signal that will accommodate at-grade crossing over at the street level.
And at.
You did something like international.
Yes, similar.
Okay.
Similar concept.
And it's an at-grade widened sidewalk on the southwest side of Chrysanthem? That's what your recollection is?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if there is an opportunity to improve it and separate that bike lane on the trail side from what I'm looking at, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
It looks like there may be quite a ramp distance coming up from that depth, I'm not sure, with that little cutback.
That's where you go.
Right there.
I don't know what that allows.
I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
No.
You'd have to look at it in more detail.
It's like, somebody's pencil slipped.
Yeah, on the southeast side, there's a split in the proposed trail network. Perhaps you're coming up from a grade or something at an ADA slope, trying to get back up to the regular trail grade.
That's it exactly, the grade of Chrysanthem is higher than the trail immediately to the south of there. And so the spur that veers off towards the east, that's coming up to Chrysanthem grade, and the spur going relatively straight is going underneath the undercrossing.
Is that what, no, I think, are we talking about the same thing, this? You're talking right there.
Yeah.
This is drainage behind here, right? These two.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this one is going up to the street, but wouldn't this be like the drainage behind Stone Creek? This is drainage and this is drainage, right? That's behind the houses.
It is.
So it might be bringing you up to, is that open space of some sort?
It's bringing it, it's coming upgrade to connect to the sidewalk that's adjacent to Chrysanthem.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
If you go to any of the park figures, like figure 10, that shows up as a little green space.
Yeah.
A little sliver of green.
Okay, do you want to continue with staff report?
So quickly, a location of its 3.5 miles of 10-foot-wide trails to the city's existing network, and that's onsite. Offsite is 0.35 miles, and that's connecting to the north to the Canulans Trails. So there is a variety of recreational opportunities. This slide shows the public parks, open space, wetland, nature preserve, and private park and open space. The community park is located north of Chrysanthem, and that's within the Parkview neighborhood, 10.78 acres. And the neighborhood park is 2.19 acre park, and that's located north of Chrysanthem, and that is near east Rancho Cordova Parkway. And a 1.21 passive park, and that's located near the nature preserve. I'll call your attention to the open space located at the corner of Rancho Cordova Parkway and Chrysanthem Boulevard. This is across from the commercial. The aerial and street view shows an example of this area, opportunity for pedestrian access and walkability. This slide shows just the wetland preserve, which is going to be dedicated to the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. This is 37.7% of the project site. Three or 30? 37.7.
That's a lot of cows.
Lot of cows. So the large lot is 37 large lots, and the purpose is to create boundaries for the multiple land uses and zoning districts as well as the major roadways. There's a very busy tentative small lot subdivision map. So into color, it just shows the eight different single-family residential lot sizes with the commercial and high density. The phasing plan included in the Ranch Special Planning Area handbook shows logical timing and appropriate completion of infrastructure and roadway facilities. June, I didn't understand this at all. I don't get any phases out of that. I mean, okay, so some of it's pink, some of it's green, and some of it's blue, but it doesn't identify any timeframes for the A, B, C, D, F, G, whatever. I don't know how to read that. What's the timing? The applicant speak to the phasing plan. Okay. They can do that when they talk. So the development agreement vests developers a right to proceed with development. And the summary of the key sections, term life is 20 years, CCNR Enforcement and Property Maintenance Code, Park Development and Community Place Fee, Infrastructure Maintenance Finance, and then the Homeowners Association within the age-restricted community. It does include an affordable housing plan and participation in the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. For the affordable housing plan, 7.14 acres of high-density residential includes the in-lu fee for the residential market rate in age-restricted, and then the non-residential development for the trust development impact fee. Here's some key dates for the environmental impact report. The EIR will create the foundation expedite all future environmental review. Staff recommends that the city council first adopt resolution certifying the EIR and adopt environmental findings, the considerations and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and then adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment, large lot and small lot, with the attached conditions of approval, and introduce in way the first reading for the ordinance for the rezone, and also introduce in way the first reading of the ordinance for the development agreement in appendices, and then adopt a resolution approving the ranch affordable housing plan. There is one correction on the resolution for the affordable housing plan. It stated Exhibit A to the development plan, it should state Exhibit I. And with that, the applicant is here, and staff, if you have any questions.
Can I ask a couple of questions about the development agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so probably you or Elizabeth can clarify the business about the HCP.
Allow me to open the public hearing, which I should have done a few minutes ago.
So I, sitting on that commission, I couldn't tell from the staff report, it makes it sound like, I mean, it's my concept that they are supposed to get their environmental permits through the HCP, but most of the time, it's written about in the staff report that mentions the HCP, and then it says, and they have to have their federal permits prior to going to the HCP. And that was confusing.
So Darcy Clark with the Planning Department, I can further elaborate on the HCP. So the HCP is adopted to streamline the process. They have submitted their permit with the city right now, and we are in. They have submitted their permit with the city right now, and we are in process and pretty close to being ready to give it, basically check the box to be able to send them on to obtain their final sort of review from Army Corps. So we have had a pre-app meeting with Army Corps, which happened right prior to the holidays. And so the process has been initiated, so there might have been some confusion of how it was written in the staff report, but they will go through the HCP process, obtain that permit, which basically streamlines their process to give them the necessary permitting that they need through all of the regulatory agencies.
Okay, and that's important. It's page eighteen of twenty-seven, section ten, participation in the HCP, because it does say pay the city the mitigation fee, and prior to the issuance of the HCP permit, developers shall obtain and have all necessary permits to ensure compliance with the HCP. So it sounded like they were doing that as an independent process, when in reality they're going through the HCP to do this.
Correct, they are.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was one question. The, I think it's the development agreement that, or maybe it's either the development agreement or the SPA that either, that talks about the architecture and the placement of houses on the individual lots that are for the small lot maps. So, number one, a significant number of the houses have a three-foot interior setback on one side, and we stopped doing that ages ago. That does absolutely nothing for anybody. It encourages nothing but weeds and rocks. Nobody can get into a three-foot setback to do any landscaping whatsoever. There's so many of these lot sizes have a five-foot setback on the garage side, which we assume is so they could put their trashcans behind the fence, but they have only a three-foot setback on the other side. And I just, I don't think that's appropriate. And then the other thing that really bothered me, the architectural styles that they show are very reasonable architectural styles, but it simply says, "These representations are not meant to be descriptive, but are meant to demonstrate typical examples of the variety of footprints and massing elevations and possible design elements." And then they want ten years vesting in something that they're showing us that they're not going to build. How can we vest them for any years if they're not showing us what they're going to build? It would seem to me that all the villages would need to come back for design review, but they want it all vested.
That is correct. Each individual village will have to come back for design review, so we may need to provide further clarification in terms of the design review itself for the actual packet and the architectural styles that are representative of what they want, but you're correct in that each village will have to come back for its individual design review, as well as the clubhouse, which we're currently processing.
Then what would we be vesting?
You'll be vesting those entitlements that come forward, because they'll still be part of that development agreement that's in place.
Okay, but it specifically says... Somewhere, it very specifically says that our normal standards are three years, and they want to be vested for ten years. And the discussion is about the architecture.
Correct. So those individual design reviews that come forward at a later date in front of the council, they will be vested under that, the development agreement that's before you tonight. So that's, there wouldn't be a further development agreement that's done for those. They're all going to be vested under this particular one. So those additional entitlements that come forward to you will have an expiration date of ten versus the typical three years.
Okay, that doesn't make sense. Either we're approving architecture tonight that would be vested for either three or ten years, or we're not. And if we're not approving architecture tonight, then how can we adopt an SPA that shows something they're not going to build?
So the SPA document that's...
Yeah, I'm not following that.
Do you want me to, okay. The SPA document that's in front of you is conceptual architectural renderings for the future design of the site. So what the DA is doing is vesting those future entitlements that'll come before you. Now, when those come before you, the expectation is that they will be consistent with the designs that are within this document that you're seeing tonight, in terms of conceptual architectural elements and layouts and styles that you see. So, the intent of writing that language into the DA now is to vest those future entitlements that are coming forward.
Without design review at that future date?
They will have to go through design review, but they'll get that ten-year versus the typical three-year, and it's expected that they will be consistent with these guidelines and this design booklet that's before you.
Okay, page nine, architectural styles. The handbook includes examples of different architectural styles to demonstrate typical elements of variety of footprints and massing elevations and possible design elements. Other architectural styles not mentioned in the SPA handbook are allowed, but will be subject to the city's design review approval. Okay, but as stated in the ranch SPA handbook, once the design review is approved by the council, the approvals are vested for ten years from the date of approval, and our expiration date is normally three years. So you're saying, so what I'm missing then is what you're really saying is that at the point in time, they come back for design review, and we approve design review. Then that design review, all this was due is give them the right to have a future design review approval vested for ten years? Correct. Okay. Because they've got one house plan in there that's got one of those doors that's around the back where nobody can see it from the front street.
I agree, Linda. This is kind of awkwardly worded from what we're used to looking at. I'm looking at the same item, but I get what the intent is.
In the future, when it's approved, it gets approved for ten years, they would like.
So...
In the future, when the design review gets approved...
Then it's a ten-year approval.
They want it to have a ten-year lifetime, as opposed to a three-year lifetime.
Adam, do you have a clarification, city attorney?
I think, Darcy, isn't this also referred to in the SPA itself? Perhaps that might be a good place to cross-reference it and just to read it to them. I think that it is, it's not uncommon for developers to be interested in securing a vested right for things that aren't yet approved at the time they get a development agreement. I think by referring to it in the SPA in this case, we're not preapproving that, you're not preapproving that permit. You're just saying that instead of, you're just saying that once the city does approve that, they'll be able to rely upon that as their applicable permit for longer than the permit would normally last.
Ten instead of three.
Yeah.
So, and I think that, I do think that substantively that the use of the SPA in this is important.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Darcy, is that correct and accurate?
That's correct.
All right. Do we have any cards turned in on this item?
No. I'm sure the applicant...
Anyone in the audience who would like to speak, applicant?
Good evening. Michelle Smyra here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Kavanyan Homes. I appreciated the opportunity to be here this evening. We've been here a couple times over the last few years. In fact, looking at the timeline, it was two years and five months ago today that we gained approval to move forward to issue the RFP, to start the process. Thank you. So we appreciate this opportunity, very much have appreciated working with staff over the years. I just want to give a quick overview. I'm going to introduce our team. Over that time, we've had a couple community meetings, trying to hear from your constituents, the residents of Ranch of Cordova. We've also been meeting with landowners, adjacent landowners, while not all built, mainly not built around us, all approved. And so we wanted to make sure we were being consistent with those land uses, with the roads, with the trails, with the open space. We've had a lot of dialogue with them. Our team here tonight, we've got the Kavanyan team, Olga Shirelli, who will be giving a presentation, Michael Harlan and Dave Jacobson, Beth Thompson with DeNova Planning did all of our environmental work. You can thank her for that very large document in front of you, and Wesley Fagundes on our team, who helped with our public outreach. So, we're happy to answer the questions either now that we heard relative to the protected bike lane that Councilmember Terry brought up, the commercial intensity, and whether we could do an overlay or merge that, the phasing plan and the setbacks, or we can do that after the presentation.
Maybe after.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. My name is Olga Shirelli. I'm with Kavanyan Homes. Yes, I can't believe it's been, you know, three years since we started this project, and I really appreciate, thank you very much for seeing us today. So, the staff already kind of presented you with features of the project, and all of your questions are absolutely valid, and I have some further inside information that can explain why things they are the way they are, and possibly improve on those particular items. Okay, this doesn't work. Oh, this does. So, as you probably know, we are what's been called the Donut Hole. You know, everybody's around us are entitled and approved, and in the various stages of development, the east is undeveloped, the west is almost fully completed. Chrysanthemum Boulevard is brought all the way to the Ranch of Cordova Parkway. Ranch of Cordova Parkway is extended to Douglas Boulevard. So, we're going to be a vital link between east and west by constructing the Chrysanthemum Boulevard between Ranch of Cordova Parkway towards Americanos. Our project includes nine different product lines, six in the market-rate community, and four in the Four Seasons brand in active adult. Every product line will feature, you know, three to four model floor plans, and by the sheer size of this endeavor, in our SPA document, that we work really closely with staff, that were absolutely instrumental in helping us to shape this project. We presenting styles, architectural styles, that we promising you that we're going to follow, and we're in the process of putting together market-rate and active-adult design review packages that will be submitted shortly after your thorough review, and consistent with hopefully approved the SPA document. At that point, we are asking for those approvals to be vested for ten years, just because it's just, it's a lot of work, a lot of money, a lot of effort, and it's a large project that will take us some time to build. However, it is our goal to build this project as quickly as possible and as market will allow us. Hopefully, market will stay with us. So, as a part of the, I want to give you an update where we're at. We're looking forward to this approval and your review, because we eager to break ground potentially in April, provided that staff will review and approve our improvement plans that we currently submitted for grading and grading of the project and Chrysanthemum Road, and environmental permits that will follow the HCP permit. So, Councilmember Bodge absolutely correct. It was not correctly stated in the staff report. The first step would be getting application approved through the HCP, and then with that in hand, we will go to the core. That submittal is slated as soon as we get okay from the staff and the HCP, and at the same time, making application to the state water quality board and CDFW, and so those things that we still have to do that. But HCP is the first step. So, provided everything goes smoothly, we're planning to break ground in April and go vertical in October, November, and open for sales in early spring of 2021. And we heard you. We are also invested in making sure that the high school will open sooner rather than later, and we essentially made that as a destination point for our project. I'm not sure if there is a laser pointer on this. Probably not.
There is.
There is.
There is. If somebody can help me?
You want to, you talking about the high school here?
Okay. I'm just blind, I'm sorry.
David said.
I am just blind, so there is a little green dot. So, I want to bring to your attention, oops, sorry, I'm going in the wrong direction. Here it is. So, as you see, so this is existing development, and we will be connecting our onsite bike lanes to the Canyonland Drive, which is approximately eighteen, nineteen hundred linear feet. So, making it possible for kids in a neighborhood north of us go through us to the, going from here down there on the public trails. And that will kind of, you know, brings us to the discussion on this choking point with two bridges that I will explain a little bit later. So, speaking about, so market-rate styles, so those are essentially what we elected to, and styles we elected that's trending right now and very popular, and that's what we would like to build in the Ranch of Cordova. Obviously, the active-adult styles are going to be all single stories. We heard Councilmember Bodge last time about shaded areas. So, majority of our homes include California rooms and patios for, you know, outdoor enjoyment. The Four Seasons neighborhood is going to feature impressive entry and also resort-style clubhouse that will have the multiple amenities, two swimming pools, one outdoor, another one indoor, bless you, and various recreational activities, tennis, pickleball. indoor, bless you, and various recreational activities, tennis, pickleball, and three different buildings, main building, gym, and ballroom. Well, the staff has already pointed out all the other features, but what I want to show you, I'm not sure if I showed you last time. So, this particular slide is from our existing clubhouse of the Four Seasons at the lakes at the Kent Bay, South Carolina, so you can see the quality. We're going to have slightly different style, more appropriate for California area, but we're planning on a really extensive and...
Well, I'm sorry.
Yes.
But the tower looks exactly like the tower over here at Cat Village, so I probably think that's appropriate for California.
Well, if you like this one...
I see nothing there that tells me that that's South Carolina, not California.
No, for sure.
If you like it, we can incorporate it.
It seems you've got the same windows that Mill Station's got.
Okay. You know, very well. We just had a little bit something, you know,
I'm sure.
slightly more rustic in mind. But, so currently clubhouse is up for design review. We just got back our first comments from staff, and you will see it pretty soon. So, also, before I get to the questions, or my answers to questions that you guys have, I would like to, first of all, thank your wonderful staff that we work really closely together, Elizabeth Sparkman, Darcy Gallard, June Cows, Albert here too, Tamim, and Dale Fadel, Mark Thomas, am I forgetting somebody? And Stefan, yes, I don't remember his last name.
Heisler.
Heisler, yes. Yes. And special thank you goes to Cyrus, of course, for his leadership and, you know, providing support to us. So, at this point, let me address a few items. Mayor Sanders, you had a question about that hard line, and I remember when we first met in our very first workshop, we presented you with mixed use concept. That was received very well, and we were very excited about it. And upon development of the project, we ran into issues that brought us back to the conventional line. And what I mean by that, the brown area of a high density residential is a requirement of the general plan, the 5% of the all the developable land need to be dedicated to the high density residential, and unfortunately, it has to be zoned, at least as we've been told, by, you know, specifically by, is it HDR and multifamily? I think it's RD30, that's what we zone it for. So, unfortunately, that's the only reason you see that hard line. If staff, maybe June can show us the rendering of, or a site plan of Gateway Neighborhood, you will see that we made really good effort to blend commercial and multifamily, and we certainly open to refine that further in the environment of constraints of the general plan, what we need to do in a design review. Also, this particular site is a subject to, potentially, subject to the affordable housing agreement. The city is interested in this site. That's what we understand. So, we open to do whatever will make the best project out there, and we're willing to listen, and when it gets to, so we can accept, you know, your condition or your vision of that.
Adam, it sounds like we're shooting ourselves in the foot with the general plan and the intention of doing mixed use at a site like this. Would that require a general plan amendment for this particular project in order to accommodate mixed use rather than solely dedicated HDR land?
We're being driven by the constraints that are being placed upon us by the state.
Yeah, it's arena issue, it sounded like.
So, the state's decided we shouldn't do mixed use. We have to do high density residential with no alternatives?
Yeah, so in order to meet our arena allocation, our general plan has the 5% allocation for the developable land of the project. Unfortunately, that site actually has to have a high density designation on it. We can't have this invisible line. It has to be a hard line, and in this case, in order to meet that minimum threshold for arena requirements, it has to be an RD30. So, that's why it's evolved into this hard line and established this particular HDR parcel.
Does that zoning also mean that if a mixed use project came to us that had that density of residential but also included retail in it, and commercial, that we would have to deny it based on that? As long as it has the residential densities, it could also incorporate other uses in it, correct? No?
In this case, in order for it to meet that arena allocation, it has to be its own parcel on an RD30. So, an RD30 wouldn't allow you to, on that specific parcel, have additional mixed use components such as commercial. Now, we can somehow integrate the HDR site and the commercial to look and feel like a mixed use, but we still have to have that standalone RD30 parcel in order to meet our requirements.
So, you designed boundaries that make it look like an elaborate puzzle piece?
Yeah.
Correct. So, what you're saying is that we can't do vertical mixed use, but we could do horizontal mixed use.
Correct.
And so, as David says, it could look like dragon teeth or something, as long as the whole equation was five some odd acres of HDR.
Right, so in this case, it's, I think it's a 7.14 acre HDR piece.
Yeah, 7.14 acres will have to kind of...
Be that HDR, that RD30 designation to meet our arena allocation.
Yeah. Well, if you look at Cat Village, basically, it's kind of the same thing. You've got, you've got Bridgeway and everything. East of Bridgeway is residential, but on the other hand, in the initial 30 acres, you have a five acre chunk that's BDX. So, it's like that instead of just one straight line.
The annoying thing about BDX is that that was zone mixed use. Somebody came in and said, "We just want to do multifamily," which is, I guess, fine, but if, we should be able to have the flexibility to say, if somebody came in and said, "We want to do mixed use, but we'll meet your arena numbers," that you're saying we couldn't accept that under the plan?
Right, because the state requires the actual site to have that HDR zoning designation, and the zoning code itself does not allow you to have the commercial uses in that RD30 zoning designation.
But we could zone some other properties somewhere else in the city, HDR, and then that frees the...
Well, that's what we do every time we do these things.
This was a site zone from someplace else.
Yeah. Yeah, we move these things around like shell pieces. So, we've always had that option. The annoying thing is that, and yeah, I think this is more talking to some folks in the legislature about creating flexibility. I mean, and again, if you look at SB 50, that's saying, "Stop zoning everything single family, especially in the Bay Area and LA that's anywhere near transit," which is a bad idea just from a planning standpoint. But then you come out here where we've actually zoned it, but if we wanted to have a higher use that still meets the housing need that's been identified, we're not allowed to do it. I think that's...
Yeah.
This is a political problem, not a policy problem.
It's pretty wacky, because it would say, you know, "Zone this super dense apartment complex that no one's going to want to live, the rest of the people are not going to want to live near it, because they'll be afraid of it." So, we'll probably get...
But they shouldn't be.
They shouldn't be, but whenever that comes forward, we'll get tons of opposition from neighbors saying, "Don't build this, don't build this, don't build this." And then next, "Oh, by the way, also build a strip center."
Well, but David, you're...
You could do something like, I don't know, pavilions with residential, right? You could do something really awesome here.
I think for tonight, the important part is, all these houses need to get built before that's going to be activated, and we've got a lot of time to yell at a lot of people, and luckily, we're not far from Sacramento.
But can we do something now that sort of puts a marker on what our goal is in this approval?
David, your idea for a puzzle piece was a good one. You simply do horizontal mixed use, not vertical mixed use.
And we don't know what the shape of the puzzle piece is yet, so how do we sort of memorialize the idea that this is going to get redrawn?
We can just accept a condition that says that blend, commercial, and multifamily parcel, keeping ratio consistent with what's presented in front of you.
Okay. This is one of your last phases, as I read that phase chart.
Yeah.
It's hard enough to...
And...
...commercial anywhere over there.
Okay. If council would accept that as a notion, I'm acceptable.
Just memorialize it in the notes, yeah. That's fine.
I just want to...
Can you get, does that make sense, Adam? Does that work?
It'd be a good problem to have in about 10 years, if we're lucky.
Yeah.
Can you just restate exactly what?
Oh, we can accept a condition that says that the applicant or the final product in the Gateway Village, shell blend, commercial, and HDR parcel to resemble horizontal mixed use to the satisfaction of a design review of the city. Would that work?
Sure.
Yeah, that would work as long as that, and I'm just going to go back to, as long as that hard line still stays there, so it has that RD30, and we're meeting the intent. But yes, to add the condition that it integrates...
Yes, we will have to...
Or if state law changes.
Or if state law does change.
Yes, unless, yes, absolutely.
And now, that's our problem. The five of us, that's our problem.
Yes, with the same ratios of 7.14 acres for HDR and 6. something of commercial. And nobody says that commercial can add some residential component vertically. It's just it cannot be accomplished on a HDR parcel.
And Darcy would be adding that to the SPA, not to the DA?
If we're adding it as a condition of approval, it would go on the conditions of approval for the large lot, small lot.
Condition 63, 64?
We could provide, we could locate a place in the SPA to just add that verbiage as well, to have it in two places.
You have time to include that, because this will come back under consent, correct?
For second reading.
Yeah, we can include it in the Gateway Neighborhood discussion. So, that's the story. It was a bummer for us too, because we really wanted to do...
We showed us what we're doing.
Yeah. So, trails. So, this particular location of, so as pointed out earlier, right here through all of this preserve, there is a unnamed tributary to Morrison Creek flows, and we planning to have two bridges, one bridge for the drainage crossing that has to be open bottom bridge, and another one is pedestrian undercrossing that is reserved specifically for pedestrians. And it's very hard to see on this map at this scale, but if looked closer, you will see that we have several levels of connectivity. As was pointed out earlier, we're subject to HCP, Habitat Conservation Plan. It's a plan that's been in making for 20 years. It's a big effort, regional effort, that should help and spur development and easy the burden going through the core and spending multiple, multiple years obtaining the permits and complying with mitigation to the federal agency satisfaction. So, in this particular, so HCP has, I don't remember how many conditions, but a lot. I would say close to maybe 50. So, one of those conditions, I think it's a road two or three, that specifically states that trails are permitted within boundaries, the buffer areas. It's a 50 feet buffer from the development, but the trails, when they, when the road crosses the preserve like we have over here, the trails will have to be adjacent or attached to the right of way. So, that's why we replace the sidewalks with the trails. They are attached to the roadway, but they are not a part of the roadway. So, what we can do to protect pedestrian and bicyclist, we can put, we have a specific cross section. Unfortunately, it's an SPA document. Staff can point it out to you, to that particular cross section. So, what we can do is, we can put a railing or some kind of barrier on the curb between roadway and that 10 feet bike trail that goes along that, oops, 300 feet. So, that would be probably the best solution for that, to comply with the HCP and to get to what you're trying to do. In addition, the trails are located on both sides of the road, north and south.
So, it's 10 feet wide on the north and 10 feet wide on the south?
Yes, yes. And there is a multiple ways of how kids can get around. Obviously, you see right there, there is two parallel loops. So, hypothetically, from this point, if they get to, it's a little bit cumbersome, but if they get to this point, they will be able to get down and get under the roadway. So, on the south side, it has a multi-level engineering marvel. It's very complex, because there is sidewalks, the trails are on top and trails on the bottom, and they come together to bridge that, you know, 15 feet vertical embankment of the Chrisanthi Road. And I wish I brought with me cross sections that I can show to you, but they're on file, and I'm sure Albert can provide those. They're all detailed. And we right now is in design prior to manufacturing of those two bridges. Setbacks. So, we always, we knew that you don't like three feet setbacks, so when we submitted this project originally, we proposed four and four, four on each side, more than three. But then we, probably on the second round, we've heard that it would be more preferred if the side to the garage would have a five feet setbacks. So, that's how we got back to splitting four and four into three and five. So...
Why can't you have five and five?
Because the lots are not wide enough.
Why can't you design wider lots?
Well, because the price point. People certainly love wider lots. However, the affordability, we're trying to provide the affordable product, and people would buy...
Two more feet of ground adds to the price of the house.
Well, it's not as simple as a two feet, but what we can do is, why don't we just do five and four? We already have five on one side, and we have three, so why don't we just move it to four? We have a pop outs...
Better than three.
Yes, absolutely. We have a pop outs for, you know, some architectural styles for the fireplaces and such that sticks out, and that's why... the fireplaces and such that sticks out. And that's why that three feet was important to us, so we still stay in compliance. But I feel confident that we can accommodate five and four with minimal structural issues, because we really want to.
Well, we found, in the early days, we found that we were approving houses where, this was, this was in the days that people actually built fireplaces as opposed to everybody having an, an interior gas fireplace that's just a chimney, basically a flue going up through the house. And we found that people could not walk around their fireplace. They could not walk between the house and the fence. And we stopped doing that.
We're going to work through those issues. They are noted. And we will work through those issues on a design review for our high-density products.
And you're proposing right now a four-foot setback on one side, five-foot on the other where the gate is?
We proposing, we propose, right now, its proposal is three and five, because it was a four and four before, and we were asked to provide five on the garage side. So we just split it and made it five and three. And so.
Five and four is better than five and three.
Yeah. Having lived in the, the, the test case of what not to do, right, so in the villas behind the clubhouse, they were three and two, I want to say. And that was a problem. But the, the, the two didn't really matter at all, I will say.
And what was it, rocks and weeds?
It was rocks and weeds in my bar, my barbecue, when I didn't use it, sat there. And then we, we would drag it out from there. But that was really all that, that you put over there. To me, that doesn't matter. Making that two, I don't even think matters. Having the five, though, really does matter on, on one side.
We have a five from one side.
Yeah, because we could not get trash cans through. And it was three and two, I want to say.
And it's, it's only for the high-density projects.
And it might be three and eighteen inches, honestly. So it was even that much worse.
I can't walk around our air conditioner unit.
Yeah, so that was in the back of the house, so you could still get around it.
No, 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 ours is on the side.
Yeah.
But you can't get between the air conditioner and the fence. I mean, I can, okay, but you can't.
Well, I don't live there anymore. But yeah, the, the AC unit was in the back, but the setback for the yard, because they had a zigzag yard, so you had a five-foot depth on one part, and then you had three feet on the other half of the yard. So only half of it was five foot wide. But I, I would, I would say.
Recommend that that's the way to live.
Five and three is fine. But if, if you're saying that, you're saying you could do four and three instead?
Four and five.
Four and five?
Four and five. That's better.
That's fine, but I, I would be fine with five and three, so long as you get the five.
Yeah, we, we have five on every single one of them, on one side.
Yeah, our, our bigger problem was, was the shortening of that one side. I don't think the other one really makes a difference.
Okay.
That was, was all that was on, on my list.
Should you just explain the phasing?
Oh, yes, of course. I apologize. I completely.
I'm sorry that didn't register with me.
I don't think I have a phasing here.
It was pink and blue and green or something.
She didn't have.
June, could you please assist me with?
While they're bringing, while they're bringing that up, as part of the phasing, both of these developments, let's say A and B, right, so market and then, and then active living, these are going to start at the same time, right?
We thinking to advance market rate at this point, just a little bit.
Okay, so you'll do that first?
Well, we try to do it, so I, I will explain if we can go to the, just because of the logistics of it and the clubhouse, because we can't open for sales without the clubhouse. So that will be naturally.
Everybody else has.
Though that, but, yes, for market rate, I see your point, though, for a active living that they may not move there if they're not getting it at first.
It's a tremendous draw and.
It's not bothering Lennar.
Well, I guess we can learn from Lennar.
Which Lennar has, oh.
All of them.
Their active living ones, usually?
Heritage, yeah.
Oh, they built them first. Interesting.
Well, they had a small clubhouse. They just built the, the larger one just, just a few months ago. They completed it. But for years, they were operating from a smaller one where they have gym and that kind of stuff. So as, so as you see, and I apologize for this exhibit that is not clear. It's, it's probably version twenty-two, or not, if not twenty-three. And we probably just kind of lost our way. But the numbers on, in the fields are indicate the phasing, sequence of the phasing. So one stands for the phase one. So blue is a phase one, essentially. Green is a phase two, and pink is a phase three. So what we're proposing currently to rough grade, green and blue, and obviously chrysanthemum, and phase, so that will be done hopefully this year with, if we get all the necessary approvals. And the blue will be improved and go vertical as a phase one. And once, and the way it's segmented, there is a little science behind it. All of those are different products. We expect certain absorption rate that we currently see right now in the marketplace. So that's why they're shaped the way they're shaped. So it's a natural, you know, progression.
Okay, so the number is more important than the color?
It's the same. So if you see, every blue parcel starts with number one. You have one F, one G, one I, one H, one B, one C, one A, one D.
Okay.
And all the green starts with two, and all pink starts with three.
So the clubhouse is one G in, in.
There's, there's pink, one F.
Pink, one F.
Yeah, pink, one F.
Oh, yes, I see. That's probably a mistake. My bad.
So the clubhouse is one G?
Yes. And because clubhouse is extremely big endeavor, due to its complexity and cost, that's why we think that naturally, we're probably going to start with Village one A, one B, one C, and one D. That's probably where we're going to start.
So just for the record, if, if, when one F is corrected, what will that new number become?
It would be three F, I assume.
And then what does three F become?
It will just be bumped up.
You bumped down.
So, so just to give you a little bit, so this one A is the same product as this and this. What's right now is one F and three A. It's the same product. So we don't need it till we run out of one A. So that's why it's a, it's a typo.
So you'd end up with a three H would be down where three G is, and so.
No, they're going to keep their colors.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying that your, your, your one F is really three E, and then three E would be bumped up to F, then F, G, and H, G, G would become H.
That's correct. And if market is hot and there is a lot of enthusiasm, and it's selling really, really well, you know, and we run out of, you know, one A, we may jump on one F or three A.
So one A, B, C, and D are all the same product type?
Uh, no.
That's not accurate.
No, no.
One A and B are the same. C, D, and E are diff, are different.
June, could you please move to the site plan that represents, yes. So all those individual colors are the same product line. We had so many variations of this exhibit. We tried to do it by, you know, by product, but then it needed different purpose. So that's why the phasing, we changed the colors. But if you want to see what's going to be done, in the phase one, we have every kind, except sixties, our largest lots in the phase one.
So I, just based on everybody's comments about high-density residential, is it really logical to have these few houses back up to high-density residential, which is going to be multi-story? And while you have to have a hundred-foot setback between the multi-story, that's typically their garage line?
Mm-hmm.
Is it logical to put those fourteen or so houses there?
We have a specific site plan for HDR that minimizes conflict between multifamily and single-family. We need every piece of land, developable land we have, and that particular road is important to us because this particular parcel is the main detention pond that provides attenuation for the flood control. And we have to build that as a, you know, day one. So we will be building this as a day one. And since we're already building there, those are going to be lovely lots.
Yeah, I just have a sneaky feeling that will be the least desirable group of houses because they'll have multi-story behind them.
That probably, you're probably right, and it's a risk. And we will have to adjust our marketing for that.
I'm just super excited we're finally here. All that talk right there. Super excited. I can't wait for you to build all the units and be done by the next year like you promised. So that's the really exciting part, because this, having this kind of senior community in my area, and the fact that you're going to build all the infrastructure for my high school. I mean, can you really, I mean, that's exciting that they're willing to take that leap and really do that for us. So, super excited, so glad to have this in our community, and glad we finally got here after two very, very long years.
Well, thank you very much. We're here, and our team, K-Habbinian team, is here. So if you have any questions. And I just want to let you know that we did really have a good time working with staff, and really happy with the project at this point. And at certain times, you know, it was, we didn't have compromises. Well, we did, but, but we found common ground, and it was, it was a good experience. We definitely want to stay here.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from people in attendance? Questions from council members?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move the staff recommendation?
And we had some modifications along the way.
If we could just have June restate the modifications for the record, that'd be good.
I think we had the add into the SPA regarding the gateway neighborhood, blend the horizontal line with commercial and high-density residential with the approval staff design, or I think it was with any state revisions. And the setbacks for residential lots, single-family residential lots, from four feet to, I mean, actually from three feet to four feet. So it would be a five-foot on the garage side setback, and then four feet on the other. And for the phase plan correction from IF to three F, and then move the subsequent phases down the line.
Adam, do you want, do you want the, the motion to be more specific about adopting the EIR and the findings of fact and the statement of voter writing considerations?
It's written down, isn't it?
No, it's adequate to move the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Does that accommodate everyone's concerns on council?
And I'm fine with modifying my motion to accommodate the, the staff, the staff's accommodations that she.
All right. So we had a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
You had the second. There we go. I could remember the second. All right. Roll call, please.
Council member, let's see, hold on, let me try that again.
Do this.
So we had, sorry, I think it did go to sleep. We had council member Terry with the motion, and we had council vice mayor Gatewood with the second.
I have no idea how to do that.
Hit the button.
Just did. Council member McGarvey.
Aye.
Council member Budge.
Yes.
Council member Terry.
Aye.
Vice mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Go build. We have shovels in the other room.
We heard the promise.
All right.
All right, we are moving on to regular calendar items. Items number, item number sixteen, if the clerk would announce the subject.
The subject is technology initiatives update.
Very good. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, this item is not urgent, and if it's the wish or the desire of the council, we can postpone that to, and continue that to the next meeting.
How long do you consider it?
Staff, is it twenty minutes? What, what's your guess?
Half an hour, twenty minutes.
If you'd like a more thorough council review of the topic, delaying it a couple weeks would probably be a good idea, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I'd say keep it to fifteen to twenty, or you can get thirty at another time.
I've sensed a certain dampening of energy in council members.
And I have meetings in the morning.
About three or actually, we're, we're more hours. We started at three o'clock today.
Sorry for those that stayed for that, but you'd, you'd get better questions out of me and feedback.
Okay, let's, let's postpone if there's no objection. And Cyrus will just ask you to find an appropriate spot in the future agenda. I'm going to go on to item number seventeen. Are there any council requests for future agenda items? Saying none, we are going to adjourn in memory of.
Lynn Robey and veteran Greg Judd.
Very good. And with that acknowledgement, we are adjourned.